This conference will now be recorded.
Like making L out of it?
Yeah, just a little L about that long.
Okay.
Bear.
Yeah, you can use bear.
Right, right.
He said it'd be.
Oh, yeah.
He's not very good.
No, he is perfectly pissed. Oh, he's pissed.
Yeah, I don't have this.
I think they should have left. You know, you can always say.
That's too bad. It was a heartbreaker. Needed that.
I gotta put this down.
This is there. Than the one we had.
We're bringing stuff to the meeting at the.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is different than the last.
Try the different, a little different setup this time. So item number one is going to be consider adoption of the proposed agenda.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we approve of the adoption of the proposed agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
No.
Malat?
No.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Wait.
Okay.
I think we should discuss this.
So if there's a change to the agenda, I suppose attorney's not here yet, so.
Yeah. Well, the only thing I would say, I mean, if there's another motion that's related to the agenda, I don't know. I assume the city attorney will be here shortly. I haven't received any notice of not being here.
Yeah, just wait.
Just wait for the attorney.
I don't know if you want to wait until the attorney gets here. That's the best option.
Is that the only option?
Well, I would think an alternate motion.
Yeah, I mean, you could do an alternate motion if it was to approve. I assume, again, we don't have. I mean, I guess the alternate motion could be that you want to adopt part of the agenda, some of the. I mean, if there's something about the agenda you don't want on here, I guess is an option. Typically, well, we've not had it that way before.
If it would be permissible, I would make the motion that we adopt an agenda that considers anything that's on the regular agendas before the agenda transparency issue came up.
Are you saying to consider items two and three?
We could go consent. We could go request or comments. We could go consent. Take out item four and continue with five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
So I'm just, if I'm hearing correctly.
Remove any items on the, this agenda that are considered to be involved with that ordinance.
With the resolution 2023-02.
So you're recommending, so you're recommending, I just clarify, recommending adoption of the agenda less item four, is what I understand.
Well, it would be less item one and less item four.
Well, but if I understand, you're making a motion under item one to consider adoption of an agenda less item four. That, that's your motion.
I believe, I believe that would work.
I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what I'm trying to.
We need our city attorney here.
Yeah.
For clarification.
We, we can just wait too, until he gets here.
Is he scheduled to be here? Yeah, I'm not, I've not heard from him. Said he wasn't going to be present. I don't know if he's running late to. I'm just testing.
Heard a car door.
Let me step out and see if I can.
Can you contact? I've never talked to anyone. He might have quit and didn't tell.
That's where we're supposed, both supposed to be here.
But those people in the village, man. There were only three of them. Yeah, last time there was two, so. I wonder how much grief the appraiser got. I got.
Yeah, some people.
Set.
Which one is it?
The, in the blue shirt beard.
Okay. He looks like he's tough enough to handle it.
Oh, he's a big enough boy, he can handle it. Did you see that fist fight down in Texas, the legislature?
Oh, no.
He'll be here in a couple minutes, he said.
Yeah. It's on Fox. There's somebody. They're all, we can sit down here almost, in Texas.
That's unfortunately starting to turn.
Of course, my sister thinks it's cool. She's so. So did you get out of your house? What you wanted or did you get more?
We could ask you for it.
I told you about that double line up one. Those double lines up to 110.
Oh, there is?
No. That one's on? No. On the east side of the road there, dang it. You know, by where the maintenance shed is there.
Up on top of that?
Well. Part 369, I think, sold in.
Isn't that one of the lots of ours? Those that were just kind of put up there.
Uh, yes.
They were just kind of put there.
Yeah. Keep asking Jack, what the hell? Did you know that's the highest point?
Well, that locked up, I thought, down at 100,000, I thought that was the highest point.
Oh, well. Or Castle Lake is.
Yeah, I thought that's why.
There he is. Here. We were trimming. For.
So there was a, there was a motion to consider adoption. Motion failed.
At three.
Highest asset.
Hey.
Oh, with the. Yeah. Per Campbell's motion. Okay. Yeah. We've got to approve the agenda. Yeah, we should make a two. I'm sure whether we can move forward. Per Campbell's, that's beautiful, man, that thing.
Okay. I did. I guess. So I just, I was just telling the city, so we had the motion to approve. That was denied. We have a secondary motion. I don't think there's been a second, but I think there was a question on whether you could approve the agenda less item four. I think that's what I understand the current motion is. With that, I'm turning it over to the city attorney as to.
Yeah, I mean, the body can do whatever it wants as far as, I mean, there's no policy, there's no resolution, there's no ordinance that would somehow set a standard. If you have a majority, conduct business. You can choose to conduct business. If you have a majority to adjourn, you can choose to adjourn. It's, at this point, you, if you, the, if you want to adopt an agenda that would take any agenda item off, that basically is just saying, we're not going to discuss that, but since there is no policy that would, you know, speak one way or the other, later in the meeting, if, if majority wants to discuss something or amend an agenda, you can do that.
So we'd like to discuss it. Talk about it.
Yeah. So Zach, could you read that motion that I made, please?
Uh, the motion be to adopt the proposed agenda less item four. So under that scenario, we would discuss everything except for item four.
And does that go pathetic that now want to make that motion stand?
Yeah, we, you can certainly choose not to discuss the creation or consideration of resolution 2023-02 adopting the city council agenda.
Well, I'm sure that'll be in discussion later.
Well, if you adopt, adopt a agenda, you'd have to add that later.
Right. That's part of the council comment piece.
Right.
So the motion's been made then, as I understand it, by council member Malat?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'll second it.
A motion is second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Uh, yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Item two, requests or comments from the public. If anyone's wanting to make a comment at this time, please remember to give your name and address. You'll have three minutes. I will give you a 30-second warning toward the end, just to let you know to wrap it up. And we'll pause for that. There being none, we'll move on to item number three, consent agenda items. Today, we only have the A and B, but if council has anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda, now would be the time to do that.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda items three, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
So we're going to skip four and move on to five, hearing the presentation from Wyandotte County Appraiser related to 2023 property valuation.
I appreciate everybody's time and the opportunity to come speak with the group. This is a version of the presentation we've done for years with the county commission, kind of an update or a preview on property values and a bit of additional information. Felt like it was important to visit some of the other taxing jurisdictions this year. That's something we've never done before. I think it's been a good thing. I'd like to do it next year because it's all dealing with the same stuff. It's property value and budgets. With that being said, I'm Matt Willard. I'm the county appraiser for Wyandotte County. Been with the county about 17 years, two years, give or take, as county appraiser. Jay Robbins usually joins me these. She's a deputy county appraiser. Our staff consists of 28 employees. That's for 67,000 parcels overall. About 5,000 of commercial, rest are vacant, residential. We also got a personal property division that deals with personal property accounts, manufactured homes, trailers, boats, stuff like that. I always start these presentations off with just a couple of notes. Appraisers don't create value. That's buyers and sellers in the marketplace. What their transaction property at is what we're sexually poorly held to, to establish value. Properties are selling for more. Our values from the county appraisers office are going to go up. It's a legal responsibility we have. We are an independent office within the UG. Evaluations are set prior to the budget process without any outside influence. There's an idea that, oh, county's broke, needs more money, appraiser raises the values. That's not how it works. My work is done before budget discussions even get started. So what is the purpose of this process? First and foremost, it's to appraise all real property at fair market value. Allows for distribution for tax burden. Evaluation is market-based. Again, budget and valuation, those are two separate processes. Residential parcels in the state of Kansas are assessed at 11 and 1/2% of market value. That's what actually gets, the mill levy gets applied to. That's what the tax bill is based off of. Commercial properties, and these are set in the constitution, are assessed at 25% rate compared to market value. Again, those assessment rates are set by the constitution, as is appraising at fair market value. We do have oversight that's conducted on our procedures as well as our statistics. The statistical portion of that is what's called a ratio study. The target for that is 100%. That would be every property that sells, we have right at market value on it. That's not attainable. So the typical range for that is between 90 and 110%. Last few years, Wyandotte County, it's 92 to 93% has been our median ratio. That's to say that overall, we are slightly under appraising property. Talk about the taxation process, kind of start to finish for just a minute. The effective date of our appraisals is January 1st. Anything that happens after that isn't considered in that appraisal. We send our notices typically March 1st is our goal. I took an extension this year because I wanted to make sure that the market wasn't taking a downturn before we sent our values. Looked at December sales, looked at the January sales a little bit, looking for a trend, didn't find it. So we mailed on the ninth. The appeal deadline would have been April 7th. That falls on a holiday. I want to make sure everybody that wants to appeal has that opportunity, and by statute, I can grant an extension to that 30 days. I did this year. The appeal deadline is April 10th for real property. From there, we certify our values to the county clerk. That kind of begins budget season, for lack of a better word. The values that my office establishes are transmitted to all the taxing jurisdictions. That's the city, county, all the school districts, library board, drainage districts, and a couple other self-improvement districts. They get those numbers. They start the budget process. Once the budget's done, mill levy gets established, tax bill gets sent, and we start the whole process all over again. One of the main questions that we get from taxpayers is why did my value change from last year? There are several things. The biggest one right now is the real estate market. Houses are just flat, sold for more than they were year before, year before, year before. Our values have to reflect that. I get a question often, what if values go down if we have a housing crash? I was here in 2008. We started seeing the effects of that about 2010, and values on residential properties dropped. So it can and has happened. Uh, so market's the big one. We do re-inspect every property at least once every six years or anytime a subject sells. A lot of times when a subject sells, there's been improvements to it. We recognize that in the value. And we also want to recognize what sold, so we can make sure that it's fair comparable to other properties. So those are a couple of the reasons why value can change. Looking forward into 2023, again, that valuation date is January 1st. We are starting to see that sales price growth is slowing, but we've still got a really tight housing market, a real slow, low, low supply. And I base that on the idea that we're an affordable community within an affordable metro, if we look at it on a national scale or even a regional scale. Rents are still higher than mortgages, payments in a lot of areas. With that being said, we're in a higher interest rate environment. Um, it was much higher even a couple of weeks ago. Interest rates started to moderate for mortgages. But that does slow down the market. I've looked for evidence of a downturn or reversal of that daily. I've got news alerts. I read everything. We are seeing it in some areas, not in the Midwest, not in Kansas City. The coasts are beginning to see that. But they had a bigger run-up than what the Midwest had. I attribute that affordability. A few points on interest makes a big difference on a million-dollar house compared to something that's lower priced. MLS, this slide just shows, uh, we've still got very low days on market, 22. When I started, you could expect two or three months for a house to sell. That's not the case anymore. They are taking just a bit longer than they were, but they're still selling quickly. The average sales price for MLS for everything that sold in Wyandotte County for 2022, again, through December, was 215,000 with a median of 195. That's an increase for their tracking of about 8% year-over-year. Talking about that slowing down, Zillow tracks sales, tracks their algorithm. If we look to July here, there's a big run-up and that kind of paused. That was interest rates starting to take effect. There was a dip. A lot of that is seasonal, and we started to increase again. But again, no drop, no drop before the end of the year. I apologize. I'm going to take a drink. Talk about being an affordable community in the metro. Our median single-family sales price, according to Redfin, the reason we use Redfin here is they've tracked that for all the surrounding counties. I think it's informative that the median sales price that they use was 185,000 compared to 220,000 Jackson County, which is next closest competitor. That's really what's driving prices here, is the fact that we are still considerably more affordable coming by than any other community in the surrounding metro. Another thing we do to check the health of the market is look at foreclosures. We look at 2008, 9, 10, a lot of foreclosures. That has an effect on sales prices of non-foreclosure homes. We can see it trending down until we get to 2016. That's about the point where all the housing crisis foreclosures have worked their way through. Barely stable until we get to 2020, and it drops. That was COVID foreclosure moratoriums that continued in 2021. What I anticipated was a return to that 400 level that seems to be pretty typical. In 2022, uh, the moratoriums were gone for the bulk of the year, and we didn't see that big uptick. I think that's an indication of a strong housing market. If folks get in trouble, they're able to sell and get out. Um, and in addition to that, not a lot of folks getting in trouble because we've got that affordability on reported rates and what payments are. This slide shows 2019, and this is sales. The light gray bar on the left is 2019. The gold bar on the right is 2022. If we look back to 2019, our typical sales ranges between $100,000 and $150,000 countywide. By the time we get to 2022, that's 200, 300,000. Sales prices have just moved up those graphs. If we look back to 2019, we had 184 sales that occurred under $50,000. It was 37 this year, and I reviewed a bunch of them. There were very few of any of those that were actually habitable houses. So we've had a real movement in what property is, is selling for countywide. Specifically, so when we go to value of property and set up our sales comparison approach, we set up what are called models. That's the map here. Edwardsville is model 14. When we're valuing property, the comparables that we use for the comp sales approach, as well as the sales that we use for other analysis, are going to be contained within that boundary. Whenever you go outside to pull a comparable, it's always going to be contained in there. As we're setting up the comparable sales approach, we're going to look to the subdivision level first, and then what we define as a neighborhood. I can provide a neighborhood map. I thought this one was updated with that. I apologize. And then a neighborhood group, and then eventually, I'm looking for comparables. It can't go out to the model. It's preferred not to, but that's going to depend on the number of sales that are comparable, for lack of a better term. Looking at Edwardsville last year, the median sales price was $265,000 with over 23 sales. Um, and again, that is houses that have sold. With all that being said, the bottom line impact is for Edwardsville at this point, and this number will change, it'll decline somewhat. We're seeing a 10% increase in real estate assessment. The impact for your median, single-family residential home is going to be an increase of value by about $46,000. If the mill levies stay the same, um, that's going to be slightly less a $900 impact at the median on the average, on the residential tax bill. Again, some will increase more, some will increase less. Some areas of the county have seen a larger increase in assessed value. Edwardsville, the tax base here is more heavily weighted towards commercial. It didn't appreciate at the same rate. So you're about 35% of your base is residential, the remainder more or less being commercial. I do want to let folks know that there is an appeal process to this. We talked about it a bit in that earlier slide. I think that's a very important part of the process. Um, it's something I've been talking to a lot of folks about. If you get your valuation notice, on the back of it is the form to fill out. Send back to my office. We'll process it. You can do a phone hearing. We can do in-person hearings. Set up a meeting, sit down, talk about individual properties. Talk about how we value them. Talk about maybe some things we don't know. And if there are adjustments to be made, we'll make them, because the whole point of this process is to get everybody at fair market value. And there's no sense ignoring that in an appeal. It doesn't do anybody any good. We've had some public meetings, thinking about setting up some more to discuss that same thing. The deadline on that, though, is April 10th. Um, and that's an important deadline. There's an opportunity, once you pay the taxes, to pan or protest, but it's a slightly more complicated process. You've got to match up the payment with the form. They don't always match up. It goes to the treasury. We don't get them, we can't have the appeals. So this really is the time of year to come in and visit with us about the value. With that being said, we've also got some good information on our website. We developed a new thing this year. It's an appeal packet, for lack of a better term. Walks through the comp sheets that we use, the terms that we use, defines them, and lays out kind of a grid to bring in sales, a grid to talk about issues with the property. Before you come in and sit down with one or people, so that it's all there and all laid out. Hope to have people be more successful with their appeals with a better understanding of how the value is established. With that being said, that's all I had prepared, and I'm open for questions.
I have one. Why is property that's owned ag taxed at residential?
So ag, ag property, there's a couple ways to answer that question. Vacant, vacant ground is assessed at 11%. So are we talking about ag use parcels? Because that's a separate, that's a use value. That's not a market value. Help me understand which way to go with that question.
Hey, well, my property is, I, you know, it's, it's all woods. You can't, you can't do anything with it, but I'm, for lack of a better word, I'm taxed to death on it, you know? And I just understand, you know, there's no buildings on it, you know?
Right.
11 of the acres. And I just wonder why, does the state set that or?
So the state sets the assessment class and says, you know, fair market value. So the value we've got on your piece of property is what we're anticipating it would sell for if you went to sell it. Same as with a house or same with a commercial building. Agricultural property, if you've got, people have hay or agricultural production, that gets a preferential, preferential treatment in the state constitution because of the way that's set up. So the state has control over that. With that being said, you know, if you feel like value on that piece of property is high, I always encourage people to come in and visit with us. Sit down, have a look at it. Because we don't want to overvalue anybody, don't want to over, undervalue anybody.
Do honeybees, uh, are they considered?
They can be.
Angle, you know, being used for the property to.
They, they absolutely can be.
On a.
The way that we look at it is, you know, they've got to have water source, they've got to have hives, they've got to have a food source. So we've had people that clear, plant clover. We look at that and say, yep, that's ag use. Just sitting out a couple of beehives, dozen, because again, that's just bees being bees as opposed to agriculture.
I got you. Okay.
Anybody else?
I understand now.
Could you explain a re-inspection, how it's done?
Absolutely. So there's a couple different ways. What we had done in some prior years, we've got some tools. We've got a bleak photography, which is a 45-degree angle every two years, all four sides of the house. We can use that to inspect and measure. This year, we are going around and driving, going and knocking on doors, confirming that stuff, high-level inspection and taking new photos. If we see something that needs to be addressed or looks different, we're going to knock on the door, visit with folks. If we see something that needs to be addressed or looks different, we're going to knock on the door, visit with folks. When a house sells, we're always going to go knock on the door and try and visit with folks. But the re-inspection that we're doing is, it's a confirmation of what's there. And that's what we're looking to do with those. As part of the hearing process, a lot of folks want us to come out and take a look at the inside. Because we're limited to the outside in our normal re-inspection process. Having an appeal, folks want us to come in. We can do it by photos or we can go do an interior inspection. Depends on what the citizen or taxpayer would like us to do. With those annual inspections, they are, go look at it, get a good idea what's there. And it's mostly condition is what we're looking for. Make sure that there's nothing degraded on the property. And then update the photo and that's, that's how that goes. Measure two sides.
Is it done by, by remote or how's that done?
The inspections are us in cars going and looking. The measurement we can do from those oblique photographies.
When you say oblique, I'm not?
Sure, sorry. There's a company that will go and take 45-degree, like looking down, 45-degree photos. So you can see all four sides of the house. And there's an algorithm that you can take and go to the base of one wall, base of the other. Because they know what the elevation was and it's basically, I don't understand the math, not going to lie. But basically, there's trigonometry that happens there. And within six inches, we can accurately measure what that wall is or what that item is. It's really some pretty impressive photography. Used to be six inch resolution, it's three inch resolution now. You can almost read door numbers, street numbers on doors. It's, it's very high res. And again, we tested it extensively, and this has been years ago, to make sure that, yep, that is what's actually on the ground. And found it to be very accurate.
Would there be access to any of that imagery from the general public? Like if I wanted to see what you had, looking at my house, where I could see what you had?
Now, the licensing for the oblique photography, I don't think is for public access. Every other year, so every, once a year, once every two years, we do the side photography. And then in the off-years, we do a top-down. It's available on UG Maps. That being said, always happy to visit with folks. If you want to come in, we can show you what that looks like on your individual property or as part of the appeal.
Matt, you had a slide earlier, you talked about the 10%. And then there was another number, that one right there, it's an increase by 46, 240 to 260. Obviously, that's not 10%. Can you just explain?
Sure.
I mean, I think people see 10% and then they see 46 and go, 46 is more than 10% of 20.
It is. And so the 10% in real estate assessment, that's all classes, that's commercial, residential, vacant. What I did to get that median, single-family appraised value, is I looked at what our median value on a single-family was last year. And then compared it to what it is this year. So that's where that number comes from. And part of the reason that that 10% versus the higher number for the single-family residential is, there's a lot of commercial in Edwardsville. It increased, but it didn't increase at that same rate.
Yeah, that 10% threw me off too, because mine was 27.
There were a lot of big increases and that was everywhere in the county. That's why we've got the appeals process and that's why I'm out here talking that up for lack of a better term. Because we are trying to get to fair market value, I mean, that's our goal. And sometimes that is just what it is. But if we're wrong, I absolutely want to make corrections and make sure that we've got the fair market value on everybody's property.
You mentioned earlier in your presentation about some of the values going up because of improvements. How do you know about these improvements, from your pictures or?
Sure. So if there's a building permit that gets taken out, we get notified of those and we're going to go have a look at it. The, the sales is where we find a lot of them, to be honest, because we're going to look at every one of those. And then as part of that annual review, as we're going through and say, hey, this one looks like it had some work. We're going to make that adjustment there as well.
So the building permits that are pulled, you actually follow up? Sometimes those are pulled and not done.
And that's why we follow up, right? Instead of saying, hey, they did this. We're going to go and look and confirm before we make an adjustment.
Thank you.
So in that instance, you go up the door, knock on the door and ask for entrance?
Not necessarily ask for entrance, but say, hey, we're checking on a building permit. You know, it says you put in a new bathroom. Is that done? If they say, yeah, say, okay, you know, what, what all was done? And that can affect the condition of the house. And if it does, that's where we're going to make that determination. We typically don't demand entry for lack of a better term. Because it's people's houses, you know, it's not really our business what's inside the house unless somebody has something to show us. And where we get that is in the appeals. Say, yeah, it looks good from the outside, but I got this, this and this going on. That's where we want to come in and either get photographs of it from the taxpayer or we're also happy to put eyes on it.
Just do, make sure your improvements, like a garage or a shed or a larger shed or a larger deck, is that impacting value?
It does, because we're going to appraise what's there. Now sheds are a little bit different. If the shed is on skids, basically, one of the little portable ones, that's personal property and it doesn't get listed anywhere. But if it's bigger than, I think, 120 square feet and it's on posts, can't be moved without tearing it up, that's going to be something. Decks, again, you know, kind of the sizes there. But yeah, fences, we don't value because, well, we just don't have good information on what a fence adds to a property is really.
I can tell you when you buy right-of-way what they're worth.
And how about maintenance? I know some people are concerned if they're replacing a roof or siding. And especially as we want people to maintain their properties, we don't want that counted against them necessarily in an assessment.
Sure. And we've actually got a handout on that, I think it's on the website as well, but I'll speak to it briefly. If you've got a comp single roof and it was in average, you know, just maintenance on that, we're not going to increase value because a roof is a roof. If you've got a property that the siding's fallen off of it, the roof is trash and we're recognizing, saying, hey, this is a poor-conditioned property. Once you repair those items, we're going to recognize that. But just maintenance on a typical house, paint, siding, even windows, don't, don't increase that value, especially not a roof. Because that's just something that needs to be done every once in a while.
Would you mind, and Zach, you might have a copy of this, just emailing copies of the presentation to the councils. We get a lot of, a lot of questions from residents on a regular basis, so that would be great useful information.
Absolutely. And there's a copy of the slide deck from the public meetings we did, that's got even more information than this. I mean, it's on our website at wyco kck.org/appraiser. A lot of good information there for folks that are interested.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
If I might just say why Matt's here, I, I would, I would say this. I mean, Matt has really been valuable to staff when we need information sometimes and around appraisals, when we're doing economic development projects, just any, any number of things like that. He and his office have always been very helpful. And I know we often say, well, what do we get for our county dollars? And I would say this is one office where from a service level, I mean, it's, it's top-notch. I mean, they came out and did the workshop out here, requests. So Matt and his crew, very, very helpful to respond to requests and questions from the public, from our staff, et cetera. So I just wanted to thank Matt for coming tonight and for his support from the years. Tough job, so.
It's, it's always interesting, we'll put it that way. Thank you guys very much.
Item number six, consider one-year extension of the following service contracts. A citywide mowing contract with Supreme Green LLC, a citywide contract with White Lawn and Landscape.
Madam Mayor, it's a member of the city council. This is recommendation from city staff to exercise the one-year extension to the mowing contracts that we have with Supreme Green and White Lawn and Landscape. Through two meetings last year, we landed on these two firms to provide services. Supreme Green is doing our mowing in our, in some of our city-owned property as well as certain sections of right-of-way. I went ahead and included the, the scope that was included in the RFP when we went out for mowing services last year. So you can see those areas. The ones, I tried to just back out the areas under, in the cost table where we don't typically use them. These are all the unit costs, so the estimated cost at the end of these sections are based on the estimated number of mows. That's going to go up or down depending on how often we actually need to get mowed. Staff recommendation at this point is to move forward with the one-year extension for both of these firms. The original agreement was for a one-year term with the option to extend for up to three years. So if approved, this would be the first of a three possible extensions for these companies. If you have any questions?
I did have a question on that, Zach. And we've talked about this before, is when we're looking at some of the right-of-ways, and I understand like the vacant lots that maybe the city owns, but when we're looking at right-of-ways like the Village South area or along 110th Street, are those privately owned?
Well, I mean, for example, the rights-of-ways, let's say on section, I'm looking at the area, right-of-way area two, the area 10.1 and 10.4 were backed out essentially for kind of those same reasons. Where we try and maintain, and we're doing the mowing, where there's some public improvement there. So if there's the trail or a section of right-of-way was, was donated back to the cities through a project, which I think is where the Village South areas come in. But all the sections along 110th Street, Riverview, or excuse me, Edwardville Drive, those are where we've got public improvements or there's some kind of visibility issue at play where we're just want to make sure that the commute is as safe as it can get.
As it relates to Village South Parkway, yes, it's public right-of-way in the sense of we're mowing in the public right-of-way. We would anticipate at some point if there's development there, that development would typically take it out to the, to the edge of the curb. But because there's nothing there now, it has been ensuring that those areas were kept, you know, properly mowed. We may not be mowing them as often as some other areas. But again, all of these get brought to, I mean, brought forward in the sense of this process of what we mow or don't. Again, every property, I know we've had this discussed before, I mean, technically, every property owner is responsible to the edge of the street regardless. But Ben Jim, and I say policy, I'm going to use that very broadly. You know, when we've had public improvements like Kansas avenues or 11th Street or some of those, it's been really the direction of the council that certainly from the sidewalk to the curb, that, that general area, we generally mow a path behind the, behind the sidewalk, because that's generally the right-of-way line to mow those areas. And that's what we've basically have been doing. That's, you know, that, that would address all Village South Parkway, the rest of them, I think. As Zach has stated, they're generally right-of-way, you know, they're, they're, they're all within right-of-way areas. I mean, we don't mow private property. We do that like in a forced mows, those types of things, which we do use Supreme Green for forced mows, I believe, or white.
Supreme Green.
Supreme Green. Now, those do get charged to the property owner. If they fail to pay it, then they get assessed to their taxes and special assessments. So we do.
And so the Village South, that wouldn't be considered a forced mow because of the sidewalks there?
Well, we generally mow between sidewalks and after roads.
Okay, and then there's medians.
Because it isn't the whole driveway. I mean, I would say if it's fully developed, typically, those get taken care of. Just like in a residential neighborhood, if there's a sidewalk, most people mow at the edge of the curb. They don't wait and not mow that last, technically, to the right-of-way, but they do have to mow.
And then which section of this, isn't some of it owned technically by Lake of the Forest that we're mowing?
I believe so. We move mow along.
It may be that section right-of-way area three where it's not, it's adjacent to property owned by Lake of the Forest. But that's, again, to Mike's point, in the public right-of-way. And that's where those sections of, I mean, that's just a, kind of a, we keep those down because it's a high-visibility, high-commute type areas.
This is just a little bit of a deviation from that, but the medians in the, on 32, do we have any kind of a commitment from Topeka to take care of those at all?
Well, KDOT's general policies, they will mow those once or twice. Policy for mowing both the medians and the signs. Cities can certainly elect to take on that responsibility. Often, but you're not going to be comp.
Yeah. I would really like for us to think about that, because that looks like crap most of the year down there. It's disgusting, it's embarrassing and it doesn't, we need to either put signs up and say Kansas, a KDOT is responsible for this or we need to take care of it. Because it's, our citizens deserve better than that.
You're saying under 435, like on the east side here at 32?
I'm saying from city limit to city limit.
We could certainly get a price from our mowing contractors under, under, you know, it would be an addendum to the contract. Get a price and bring that back to you.
I'd like to see that.
We have the equipment, but I mean, I, you know, that'd probably be something we would typically contract out.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
We, we do do some, you know, we've, we've tried to, I wouldn't even call it maintenance, but if, you know, if there's loose rock or things like that out there or around a sign at a stop sign where, where we're getting a lot of complaints because people can't see, we may go out there, get it with a weed eater or something, but not, not what I would call, you know, right-of-way maintenance from edge to edge. But we certainly can get a price for that, ask our contractors.
We can reach out.
Yeah, I just think our citizens deserve better, better environment than that.
Yeah, I can't agree more. And I think, I think it's going to be, it would be expensive just because of how the curb is deteriorating so bad in a lot of the areas. I think I would almost suggest if we all agreed on getting a quote from either one of these companies, either, you know, mow the shoulders, but on the center islands, maybe instead of weed eating, maybe spray.
Yeah, nuke them.
Just to get rid of, you know, get rid of any of the vegetation that's in there because most of it's weeds. I don't think, I can't think of any grassy medians that we have.
Get farther to the west.
Yeah. You know what I mean? Because it's going to be, it'd be very expensive just because of concrete problem and trying to get in there with the mower.
Understand, we do have to, in order to do maintenance in the right-of-way of KDOT right-of-way, we will have to get a right-of-way permit from them. So, so they do have to permit that use and they, I would say they wouldn't, but we'd have to ask them about the use of any type of, anything to kill grasses, weed killers. I mean, they would have to approve the use of that company that does that, that is KDOT right-of-way. And they, have, have the authority in that case.
I think you can officially note the price and what that would be.
We can certainly reach out to KDOT, to contractor and see what the process is and prices.
Well, has there ever been any follow-up on the request that I had, four or five meetings ago, about taking care of 32 Highway, especially under 435?
We've not really received any responses.
I think that that needs to be, I think somebody needs to go to KDOT and find out why you can't take care of the highway that runs through our city. And if you're going to talk about taking care of the right-of-ways, I think Bonner took over 32 Highway from 7 Highway all the way to Camp, to the high school and out and put the highway, you know, I think that state's responsible for that other road out there. But I don't think we could afford to take on that, that project.
We can make, there, there is a program, it's called K-Link. Basically, we have a number of those agreements. We, we could investigate that. It does provide some reimbursement, it's pretty limited. The question is, what is it, what is it then obligate you to such as? Do you then have to be responsible for snow removal? Do you have to be responsible for pavement, pavement markings? And, you know, you see that sometimes on cities where they'll have a state road go through there. They will take that on. And there are some grant opportunities over time for K-Link. It's called the K-Link program and they'll provide funding for those. Oftentimes, that, that's more of a 50-50 match. And so. And so when you're talking about a five-lane road, that's a little different than, you know, some of these cities, it's a two-lane road or they have, you know, they want to have parking because it's around a courthouse or something like that. But we can certainly explore those, see what our options are. We would need a little bit of time, but we will do the research.
Approach, I think that they should be, you know, their feet should be held to the fire on maintaining what they've got. You know, to me, it's a safety, it's a definite safety issue. We got police cars that can hide in the weeds under 435. I mean, you can drive literally drive down there and see weeds and oh, there's one of our police cars sitting there waiting to do it. And, you know, I just think it's ridiculous that KDOT can get away with that. So, you know, that's just.
We will follow up with them on those items.
In my voice.
And while we're looking at visit, might be worth looking internally and seeing if, if we're talking about maintaining, you know, spring for weeds and weed eating, that sort of, it's something that our own staff might be able to spend a couple of hours on.
Right.
Just while we're comparing, while we're looking at estimates.
It's partially, I mean, and I'm not, it, it might take some acquis. I mean, we have, you know, a side mower, it's not really designed for driving and mowing. Our, our, our right-of-way side mower is, was a used unit that we bought from a county, I think in Western. I mean, it's, it, it has seen its better life. I mean, it served us well. I mean, it was definitely a good acquisition, but we would probably need to look at having the right of way.
Would the bad boy not work for that?
Uh, probably, it, it's in need of repair. I mean, I, I mean, I mean, yeah, I, I think it's just, but, but we can certainly look at all those options. But if, that's a fair question too, is what would it take if we want to take on more of that type of right-of-way mowing? I don't disagree, and I would say it's, while K32 is your most visible road, if you think about in and around, which we have on our mowing thing here, in and around Kansas Avenue, Riverview, that the bridge going over, I mean, we, those are our responsibilities under K-Link, under the, under the bridges at Wood End Road, you know, some of that stuff, I mean, I think looks poor when you come on and off 435 at Wood End Road, just out in, in the open area. Again, I think, as you mentioned, if you look at Bonner Springs, right, they have their city sign there to kind of maintain that, that loop area there. If those are things we want to look at, I mean, they certainly have costs associated with them, but they would certainly improve the appearance of the community. And we can, we can investigate that, it'll take a little bit of time, just there, there's a lot of pieces to that, but we will certainly.
I can't help but think all the crap people throw out of their windows are some way connected to that. Well, if that looks that crap, you know, if they don't care about what it looks like, why should I give a rip? I think we really need to, to have programs in the, in the future and, and treat our city in a way that, that gets the respect it needs and deserves and the citizens deserve. And there needs to be penalties for all this crap that's being thrown out. You know, the, the beer bottles in the cans and all that kind of stuff, the glasses. It just, it, it's, it's ridiculous, our citizens, and I, and I imagine some of them are part of it, and it needs to be stopped.
The trash truck.
No, no, but I'm not, I'm, I'm going to blame the people in the cars for a good portion.
How, how are both of these vendors or contractors doing right now? I mean, are they?
Oh, very responsive, yeah. It's, we've, we've had. But through the mowing season last year, we worked with White for a number of years in a couple of different capacities, especially. So he's very familiar with our cemetery and historic cemetery too, what they've been maintaining. So I've got no complaints with them. And Supreme Green were our cemetery mower prior to last year, and then we opened it up larger. And they're very responsive, they're, they, they're responsive to PD whenever we have forced mows that need to be accomplished. So I don't have any.
No issues with?
No issues with.
Broke down or?
Oh, no.
Can't do their job because of whatever.
There was a couple, I mean, and when there are issues, I mean, I know we had some when they first signed on and the surface was kind of new and they were figuring out exactly what the scope was around that 110th and Riverview section, where once we pointed it out though, I, I think it was pretty well maintained after that.
Any price increases from?
No, no, no changes to any of the rates that were proposed last year.
And White is an Edwardsville company?
Says we didn't increase it at all.
Madam Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I make a motion to extend the one-year extension of the following service contractors of the Supreme Green LLC for Citywide Mowing and then White Lawn Landscape for Cemetery Mowing.
Second. Move the motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Item seven, consider resolution 2023-03, authorizing the reimbursement of funds for preliminary and final design, right-of-way acquisition and other related expenses for the Town Center Connector project from future bond proceeds.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this project, which we'll, we'll talk a little bit more as far as the makeup of it with our next item. Essentially, what this item is, is a, is a, a repeat of the process that we use for 98 Street. Back up a little bit, the city was awarded some federal funds through STP for a $1.175 million trail project, a trail, shared use path, bike lane projects. What I've got on the screen right now, in the blue, you'll see our existing path, a little bit less than, than, oh, about 1.175, maybe a little less than two miles. Part of the Town Center Connector project would essentially finish out this, this, the Phyllis J. Freeman Trail as kind of was originally conceptualized. So what it would do would connect where the trail terminates at the end of 4th Street. There'd be a shared youth path, a shared use path that extends north on 4th Street to Blake. Around the city center site, there'd be a new pedestrian path that would lead directly into the city park down Blake. And so connecting that whole loop right there. And then the purple, you'd see some dedicated bike lanes along Blake Street and 9th Street, or excuse me, along 4th Street, Blake Street and 9th Street. What this, what we're asked, what resolution 2023-03 allows is the reimbursement of costs through a future bond item that we would incur, start incurring now, essentially with the next item, with the development of the, the designing with BHC Roads. If you have any questions, I'll.
Just overall, just, and, and Zach's doing a great job. This is one of the two projects we've got. While it's a 1.175, our estimated non-federal share, which is the part we, we pay for, for this project is, was estimated about 331,000. And, and obviously, we don't have 331,000 setting, setting over here for this particular project. But we anticipate that at a future bond issue, that piece of the project, we would not go out for bonds for 331,000 because the cost would not be reasonable. So as we've done in past, this just allows us, it doesn't absolutely require, but it allows us to recoup that from some future bond issue that likely we'll be talking about later in this year. So that's the purpose of that piece.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we adopt resolution 2023-03, resolution of the city Edwardsville, Kansas, to authorize reimbursement of the funds used to finance certain improvements in the issuance of federally tax-exempt debt.
Second.
Move the motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Item number eight, consider authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with BHC for preliminary and final work, I'm sorry, preliminary and final design work for this Towns Connector project.
I'll go ahead and leave the map up and I'll turn it over to our, our engineering friends over at BHC. But essentially, this would be entering into an agreement for the preliminary and final design work for this project with BHC. The quote that came in from BHC, if you allow me, 103,660 is what the proposed resolution would do, would allow funds expended for the purpose of the project to be eligible for refunding through the reimbursement resolution that was made before. Again, so this would add about almost two miles to pedestrian and shared use path to what's there existing. So it would be about three-mile loop, not counting the area just south of Wood End Road where the Bassinaw Trail is. Randy, you want to, any other comments for us? Randy is on standby.
I, I would note that this is a, this will be like a road project in the sense that it's a KDOT issued process, project. So there are a number of steps, because I know people are going to say, well, can't you just go out there? This should be done really quick. And yes, that's probably true. It probably could be done quicker without the federal funding, but then you have to come up with the whole million dollars plus. So it, it is a somewhat of a lengthy process. So, I mean, this will be down the road before the actual construction starts. We're, I know we just had a discussion about KDOT, but they have a, they have a very formal process on any project that goes through them. But certainly, the federal funding, bringing those federal funds back home is always a positive, I think, so.
Mike, what kind of an impact, would, would this be built before the proposed Town Center development with the development? Would it be altered if it was built and the development came in?
I, I think, I, I think likely it would be built before that. I, that is part of the kind of the, are there going to be some of the questions around the design? If there's, you know, pieces of this that should be delayed. But, but most of it is on the edge of the properties anyways. And, and we've always thought that Town Center would have, I mean, it will have sidewalks around it. And most of that, just five-foot, traditional five-foot sidewalk set back from the curb.
Just saying that if it was built and then it got tore up.
I, I, I don't know, I, I think we'll be safe there, but it's something we will definitely coordinate between this project and what's going on, on site.
That's the question.
Pretty much is going to be, I mean, for the most part, these are going to be basically at the same grade as the existing curb. So unless we're going to go change the curbs, which we're not, it should be relatively safe from being torn up in the future.
The only item that I'll add, if you're making a motion, would be also the allowance of an up to 5% contingency, up to 5% contingency in costs if it's needed for surveying, right-of-way acquisition, things of that nature.
And the contingency wasn't built into the 103,000?
Not specifically, no, really, it's an issue, not really an issue, but really just trying to get ahead of, there's already a path along Blake Street. And so, but it's, in looking at kind of eyeball on the maps as they stand now, those might be right out of the right-of-way. And so in case we need construction easements or just to acquire some piece of right-of-way, so we can tie that to what the project plan is without having to, you know, tear it up and put something in three feet away, kind of allows for that.
The intent is all of this will go, the, the intent is it'll all be within existing right-of-way, but without surveying yet, there's the potential you might have a few areas where maybe we have to go around a, a utility box or something, and it's, it's easier to go around it than to try to relocate it. So really, this is just a, a way that we don't have to come back for relatively, I mean, 5% is, you know, $5,000 roughly, give or take, so fairly small amount of money.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with BHC for the design of the Town Center Connector project in the amount of 103,660 dollars with up to a 5% contingency cost increase.
Second.
Move the motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Item number nine, here presentation regarding the Edwardsville Department 2022 activity.
It's all prepared. I have a remote and I'm looking at a big screen TV, it's like being at home. Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for allowing me to present. Originally, this was packaged at a much higher level in the sense of the view, 50,000-foot view, kind of a snapshot in, in kind of the, the, the gist that, like our finance reports that you would have, but you'd be able to just review them and, and take that and have that in your toolbox, if you will. This data, if you were asked in public or just had some curiosity, I didn't really change the format of it. If you recall from past presentations, they were fairly in-depth, lengthy, a lot of district data, stuff that we use internally and things like that. So we're just talking about caseload, citations, arrest numbers, and not a whole lot of analysis. But I would give you that, anytime you would like to interrupt, please do, I'll elaborate wherever I can and, and give you the data that, that may be pertinent.
Okay.
So moving forward, and I have to push this button. Okay, we'll start with our calls for service. And you've, you've got a lengthy timeframe, and I always think that's helpful because what you see, not just in a short three- or five-year window, you're really seeing a trend kind of since I've been here. You know, it's, it's, our, our, our communities change in some ways. There's, we, we, we really provide a lot of service to folks that don't live here. It's, it's common knowledge that in most cases, our community is built on people who live here but don't work here or work here and don't live here. So we have a lot of transient traffic. What we deal with a lot of times is, is folks demanding our service who are then passing through or demand or command our service in some way. So what you're seeing here is from the YCO Communications Department, they provide this information to us every month by the 10th of the month. They've been really steady with that over the years. And what we have is over 10,000-plus calls for service. And you can kind of see in that five-year window, that's kind of where we've been, we've had some dips. And I, I'm going to point out several times that our 2020 is our COVID year. And you can see that most of that, if you might recall, us talking about it before, occurred after May. So we probably would have been steady at this 10K area target had, had that not been a shutdown year for the, for the timeframe. So, but I keep looking at 2020 because you'll find some of this data interesting. But that, I will disclose that some of the traffic information is a part of these calls for service because you can get suspicious vehicles radioed in and that sort of thing. And you can, you could get a burglar leaving in a certain type of car, it requires a traffic stop, that sort of, so it's included in some of this.
And Mark, and this, again, this is all YCO, or Yonk County?
Create, yes, the, the data is mined from their records management system and provided to us. So it is done on a monthly basis.
But it's not the whole county?
This is just for Edwardsville, but the, but the YCO Communication Center dispatches for Bonner Springs, Edwardsville on our channel. And then, of course, the rest of KCK and some of the Community College and some of these others. So they do a little bit of everything. Does that make sense? Okay, excellent. And you can see from our averages, there's a steady increase. But I think overall, I think we really, this five-year trend is that 9,000 to 10,000, which is about where we projected some years ago, and we've held steady on it. Okay, thank you. Now, the next one is the most important piece that we can talk about when we talk about police data. And it comes early in our presentation because I want you to, again, look at that critter 46.5. This is our crime index from 2020. That was the highest we've ever seen in our entire history. And our 2022 number is the lowest we've seen in our entire history. And so, but remember, our calls for service were in the 7,000 range, and we'll go forward and you'll see the 2020 numbers are pretty low. So you've got to say, well, what the heck is this about? Well, these are serious crimes, person crimes, high-level person crimes, property crimes, arson, you know, our sex crimes, those kind of, kind of things that are driven by what we call our uniform crime reports that we have to submit to the state who then submits them to the federal government. And these are standardized submittals, right? They, they, all the criteria are already built in, and they're the ones who are saying this must be reported and in this format. So that drives what we call our crime index. And that's where we know, you know, in your neighborhood, who could be exposed or potentially involved in a, in a criminal incident that's fairly serious. So 46.5 is fairly high. So 46.5 is fairly high. Numbers by this time of the year. However, Yon County, KCK, I can't access those until the state publishes them. So without calling them individually, that sort of thing. So, okay. But usually they're in the 57 plus percentage where usually Yon County usually leads statistics and they're usually neck and neck to Sedgwick County, Wichita. Our incident reports, we'll move on. Whoa, did I go one forward? Somebody did one. What, what did we do here? Did I skip one?
There you go.
Am I right? Okay, thank you. Incident reports, these are our formal police reports taken by the officers. And it also includes both, both non-criminal and criminal activity reports. So we have a couple of variations. For example, animal control cases, we take an animal in, it has to have a formal case number of police report. If you make a felony arrest for drugs, that also has a case report as well. But you can see that we generated the most we've ever generated in 2022. And, but if you look at 2020, it was somewhat of an average year, but again, I could tell you that somewhat May 1st, the gates open. And so we, we, we managed to take all those police reports after, between May and December. So had we had that full year, we'd be pretty competitive with that as well. So you can see that we, of the 13 assigned to Patrol Division, they took quite a bit of police reports. And we have a lot of documentation that has to be managed internally through all of the staff and then to the state and all of this stuff. So quite a bit of work that happens there. And just as a side note here, 262-ish, about 12% were code enforcement related cases. That's something we took on last year and it's added to our, kind of our case count. Because we, we document everything, we track it formally. So when there's a code enforcement case, we open the case and then we bring it to some disposition, some resolve at the end of it. But we track it all the way through and then we know that narratives are written, whether they're citations or there's compliance and that sort of thing. So we do that as well. All right, we're going to citations. Well, so once again, in 2022, 22, we are very busy. Now, when you think of citations, you, you probably immediately thought of, well, they're, they're out there writing a bunch of traffic tickets. And that's, that's fairly accurate. However, when we talk about citations at the municipal level, if you attend or summoned into municipal court, you do that through a notice to appear, which is a citation, right? So you shoplift at Dollar General, we're going to write you a citation to go to court and that's included in these numbers. So they're both criminal, serious traffic misdemeanors as well as infractions. So it covers all bases because the municipal court, the way you get there is to receive a ticket from a municipal police officer or someone else authorized to write you a citation.
Is that 2022 number, you know, so large, is that consistent with the rest of the world?
Well, that's a good question, but I don't know. I don't know. As I, I did report these numbers to Bonner Springs, but I didn't, I don't think I got a response back in the comparison other than we were just talking about it. So that would be our best comparison, just right in the immediate area, similarly situated, that sort of thing. Patrol Division staff, very similar, that sort of thing. Again, I can tell you in the next page, you're not going to see that, but I queried this. What it really comes down to, we wrote 2,166 citations to people with no tags. They didn't pay their taxes, right? That's what that comes down. So they don't have tags or expired tags, some illegal change tag, no tags on the vehicle, that sort of thing. So that was 2,100 plus of expired tags. And that's a misdemeanor, you know, you're required to go to court, that sort of thing. But what does expired tags also mean to us in this business? No insurance. And we write those insurance tickets because number one, it's required by state law. And number two, protect you and the other drivers that are coming through town. The city of Edwardsville has this experience in some years ago, a policeman was struck head on by folks who were actually Mexico residents. They had no insurance. So we footed the entire bill of totaling our car, hurting our officer, all that, all that stuff was all on the city. Now think of it, your next door neighbor, right? So it's our job to make sure that there's some consequence and that we can verify that you have insurance. And the state took that same, same approach in saying that an officer, if you cannot verify that you have insurance, make it simple, that then they were required to write a citation. And that's, that's actually the next, we wrote four, almost 1,500 of those citations. So there, when we make the simple stocks of maybe a speeder, which is actually more rare than these things.
So you let them drive off?
No, that we do, we don't. In the sense that we, when we believe the car is illegal, we're going to impound the car. Because if I have, what, one of the patterns that we see when we track this data is that we have expired tags. That, that's obvious. We can visualize that. The next piece of it, either we can through computers or we're making contact, we find out that they don't have insurance and they don't have a driver's license. So the car is illegal in two ways and the driver's not legal either. So that's, that's a, that's an impound that we do. And they will go to, we use Alandon exclusively, which is at K32 Kansas down in that area. They've been well responsive. We used to use Tiger Toe to make our impounds, but they went out of business. So, so exclusively we had, we had two and now we have just the one. It's been a good relationship. But that's how, that's how it all works is the car is illegal. It can't be on the road. You can't just produce suddenly have insurance and that sort of thing and go pay your taxes. And so when they come to retrieve the vehicle, they come to the police department first and then we authorize release based on, we verify insurance and, and what they're going to be doing and that they brought a, a, a current driver with them. So that's a procedure that we use and it works very well. We've lived a long time now. So, okay. Let's see, if you think about, you know, police and ticketing and you think of speeding, we only wrote 492 speeding tickets. It's, it's one of our lower numbers.
You know, I had four.
Apparently we needed that be down somewhere else and maybe write that many. According to advice I got earlier. Okay, any questions on that? A lot, a lot of, a lot of citations. Arrests made, in this number on the next page, I'll, I'll show you that it changes a little bit. Over, over 1,000, nearly 1,100 arrests were made. And this is our clearance indicators. So if you receive a citation for a misdemeanor violation, which is you stole something from Dollar General, for example, you'll, that's, that, we don't have to take you into physical custody and book you in the jail. Okay. In fact, this is an alternative to that and it's much less expensive. So in, in a number of ways. So essentially you're, you're released on a summons to appear in court. That is technically an arrest and it's just an alternative resolution to booking somebody in the jail and that sort of thing. But that includes these numbers. And that's what, what you'll see next is of course, we've made more arrests, we've written more citations, we've taken more cases, right? More, more, more. And then the one thing that stands out is our low crime index rate. So these are more misdemeanor related arrests, except for more in our drug activity that has picked up. But you'll see that coming in just a minute. Our drug activity has nothing to do with your crime index. It has nothing to do with it. And you could have a heavy, you could have a heavy drug use in your community, drug possession use and that sort of thing. But it's really, that may drive other crimes such as your burglaries, your thefts and things within drives up your uniform, uniform crime reports and your, your index. Okay. So, so relatively overall, we're pretty, pretty safe. We've made plenty of arrests and go on from there. Now, you'll see that the number of the 22 is about eight more than the previous page because this data was queried just a couple of weeks later. And we had clearance indicators that were updated to, to an arrest. So it's just a few more, about eight more or so. But you can see, but cleared by arrest of all of our criminal cases, we cleared them about 80 plus percent. We've been in the 70 to 75% steady over the years. And so.
What's that mean, cleared by arrest?
Cleared by arrest. If we have arrested you or summoned you to court and, and therefore we get a clearance indicator. So some of this is driven by what we call Kansas incident based reporting. And so when we identify you as a sus, as a suspect, a person who stole for, from Dollar General, for example, keep using that. And then we, we take you into custody in one way or the other. And then we issue a summons because we can un-arrest you. We can put you in the handcuffs, do the investigation and say, okay, for our, we're going to go ahead and let you go on a summons. Okay? And so that's a clearance by arrest because we, we have identified you as a suspect, we have probable cause to arrest. And we're going to write you up in a Kansas standard arrest report and give you a notice to appear to appear in municipal court as long as it's a misdemeanor. Okay. So cleared by arrest. And that's again, both physical and ticket arrest, just depends on the circumstance. Are inactive cases, these are cases that reported are criminal, could not solve. And some of those are property driven. For example, you see, maybe you've received on an anniversary or a birthday yard gnome, for example. And then you put it out in your yard and the next thing you know, it's gone. Well, we don't have a suspect. It's hard to identify. We don't have any camera, didn't turn up on the internet or anything. So after a while, it just becomes inactive. It's, we didn't have any, we have exhausted all our investigative resources and we couldn't solve the case. So that's, it's only about 14%, which is pretty darn good. Exceptional clearance is that this is to do with prosecutors who, everything is in order in the case. They just feel they can't get a conviction and therefore they refuse to prosecute the case. The suspect died. That's one of the indicators. There's a couple of others in there, but that's a pretty low number. Unfounded means we received a criminal complaint of some sort and it, it never occurred. Either it never occurred here in our jurisdiction, which is one of the pieces of the crime triangle, or it never occurred at all. It was a false report. So, okay. And then the non-criminal, those are things like accident reports, information reports and code enforcement. Those are kind of typical areas. Okay. And this, this is kind of interesting. As I mentioned, the drug cases, we clear those, usually it's, they're in possession. We find you and you're in possession and we're not, we're not working a kind of a covert case where we get the, the DA's office involved and, and you know, that sort of thing. So we're clearing those about 94%. Some of those, we find them and we need laboratory tests. So some of that data may not be in yet because that takes some time. And, and/or we know that we're not going to prosecute them or a covert operation is in play. That's why there's only 94% because usually as we find you with the drugs, you're arrested, it's cleared by arrest. That's how that works. Now, when we talk about our, our crime index, for example, the persons and the property crimes, those serious, more serious ones go towards that count. And as you can see, we're clearing our, our person crimes by about 52%. And mainly that, what drives that is the people do not want to further prosecute after the initial, say the arrest or something. Or at the time that we're investigating the person crime. So we go, we're dispatched to a person crime progress. We get there and they say, no, I, I don't want to be a victim. And that's their choice in a lot of times. So that's why that's a, that's that particular statistic. Property crimes, property crimes are the highest number in, in most cities. You know, drug, drug crimes drive some property crimes as well, but, and they're the hardest to solve, quite frankly. And, but we've made property related crime arrests about 107, which is about 45%, which across the board, that's about where we've been over the years. And then the serious traffic cases, 79%, usually on traffic, it's serious. We know who you are, we stopped your vehicle and we got you. Where that doesn't happen are fleeing eludes. So when serious traffic offense, we got the DUI, we've got the transport open container, we have some other things. But the fleeing eludes, come investigate them. Sometimes we can't identify the driver, no matter how much vehicle information we might have. And, and that's where that, that statistic comes in. Does that make sense? Now, I'm going to start at the top there because what we know about our drug cases, I think everybody's probably thinking of Bear, our canine unit and, and that he drives a lot of that. He, I'm going to give you some statistics here. 88 deployments total for the year. That's five more than the previous year. 73 were the drug related searches or deployments and seven person and six article. So you see it on TV or whatever, somebody has a gun, they throw it out the window. Well, our canine unit can track those and has done successfully several times. We assist outside agencies. KCK has been one, Bonner Springs, maybe a few others, but those are the two that, hey, do you have, you have somebody on? Ours is sick, down in training, whatever it might be, and we're more obliging. And as, if you remember, when we picked out our dog, one of their, their handlers went with us from KCK up for a few days in Illinois. My guys, no, where, where we went, my verifier. And one of, one of the big things is, I think it was Denver, Illinois, and I was thinking Denver, you know, no, it's in the middle of nowhere. It's nothing like Denver.
Indiana.
Indiana. And one of the big factors here, 5,000 fentanyl pills are directly or some form or other strictly attributed to his deployment, our canine's deployment. Both in, in town as well as helping on KCK.
What's a typical place that he would find fentanyl?
Just anywhere.
I mean, what would be?
In the car.
The first thing that you would say from a personal vehicle or a truck at the commercial.
Oh, it's going to be personal vehicle. That's been our experience. Yeah. That's, and it's in several forms. It's in all kinds of stuff.
I think it'd be real good for the public to be aware of some of the places to really look for that you're pretty naive about not knowing that with the kids, you know.
And they, and from our indications, just in the law enforcement community, the, the users of fentanyl and the transporters have been careless. Because it's very dangerous. Like KCK had that one case where they had to give lots of the medicine to revive them and that sort of thing. And, and just from a simple area, you know, and that's, that's been, been the common thing. So it's dangerous, number one, but we like to get it off the street. And that Narcan, we have that for the canine as well for those things. That's, that's probably the, one of the most serious things that he can do is, and it's everywhere. It's, it's not, it's not in the center console. It's sometimes it's in a purse or in the, in the trunk. It could be just about anywhere. He's, he's well trained and he's well skilled to find that stuff and we've been to court and that's been verified. So, and he trains every, every, every Wednesday and every year recertifies and he performed well in that kind of thing. Last summer where they had that kind of gathered all the canines around to have a little friendly competition and stuff, did really well. So he's got a great handler and understand that he can't be in on all, all these drug cases. And the reason is he's not available, right? One of the, one eight hour day a week. So he's at training. So 32 hours of availability. And then what are your leave buffers? Well, vacation, he likes to go on vacation, has some sick leave. The dog has sick leave dental visits and things like that. So, you know, with already a scheduling rate of about 77%, right? We just whittle down because he's away at training and doing some of these other things. But when he's available, he's out there working and again, relied on by other agencies, well respected in my opinion.
Mark, do all the officers have a Narcon?
Yes.
With them?
Yep. You can show them?
Good stuff, man.
Right there, every, every officer, all of our officers wear external vests and it's, it's there and, and they're trained to use it. And we maybe do from some retraining as we go through the year and fire chief and I usually coordinate that and get that done for our, for our people. Yeah. That's good stuff to have and with this day and age. So. Okay. Any, any more on the, some of these arrest clearance rates? We'll just move on real quick. I thought this was just interesting because, you know, there are some states out there that collect data on every car stop and that, we collect the data. It's not required to be shared or anything, but I think it's interesting to say, well, only Edwardsville residents get a ticket from the, from the department and or arrested. Well, as I alluded to, there's a lot of transient traffic, right? We get, there's no, no fence built around a town where we just keep the, keep the Edwardsville residents in. And, and that's actually only about 21 total percent are Edwardsville residents. They come from everywhere else. And they demand when, when they have a car fire, right? When they have drugs possession, when they have a domestic at a parking lot, a wooded road, they typically do not live here. And, and that's, that's what we have to address as we've got police up, people who come through the community. It's no different than anywhere else. But we do have a substantial amount of traffic or transit traffic, if you will. But if you're going to make contact with the police department, most likely you're going to be a white male about 39 years old and live in Kansas. And maybe if you're traveling through, you live in KCK Bonner or anywhere else, all the way to Hawaii. I saw one, one mark for Hawaii. So more like a travel around the continental and then having their Hawaii license and maybe met one of our officers in one way or the other. But that's, that's our typical demographic. That's been standard. This has not changed much at all statistically. Any questions there? That's a good piece of information. Somebody said, oh, they're only picking on Edwardville residents or something that you might be addressing. That's not typically the case. Okay. And then I, I thought it would be interesting to add the domestic violence information. This is one of the, in addition to fentanyl, this is one of the high risk things that we do. And in 2008, it was something I recognized as my first full year here, that, that we had an abundance of domestic violence incidents and which have fallen off substantially. We don't have near as much as we did in those first few years. And, but what we do statistically is we know how many victims there are, suspects, the arrests. You're about 41 years old. We are on the arrest side, we're about 68% of the male are arrested with 32% of the female. And around anywhere from 4:00 PM to midnight and it's going to be south of K 32. And, and given our demographic, right, makeup, that's, we have the most population in that area. So that, that, all that makes sense. And now in, for, there's a required arrest upon finding a probable cause if somebody's in a domestic violence incident where there's been a crime committed. But in addition, we have all this data in addition to that because if we go to a domestic violence incident, we're required to make a report of it. To, to explain why you didn't make an arrest. So your neighbor could call in that there's a verbal disturbance next door and we get there and all it was is a verbal disturbance. But it was, you know, portrayed maybe as something violent or whatever. So we make a, we, we make a report of that and that goes into some of these, who we made contact with, doesn't mean they were arrested. And that's why you see that, well, 547 people were arrested out of those numbers. And, and that is a good statistic, that means we do have people arguing, but they're not being violent, things like that. And with that, I'll close it for, and stand for any questions that you might have and.
In light of the events of today and unfortunately too often, do we coordinate with the school district at all for training in the school buildings?
We do. And we have our own trainer, we have more than one that, that trains how to respond to these situations. Now, the elementary school has a county sheriff that's assigned to that school. He does do roving to other elementary schools, but we have access to that school. They have their, they have all of their policies to respond to certain situations. And therefore, they know what to do internally, they practice what to do internally. And then we have access to that building when it's necessary. And we know what we're going to do when that time comes, depending on, and we're going to respond accordingly to the information that we're given and in coordination with the sheriff's office.
Great, thank you.
Can this information, or your information be shared on our website?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you have it publicly, it's, yeah.
Typically, we'll, we'll do, Zach, we'll take this kind of information, do a little blurb on the, on like the e-newsletters and things. A link to the data, we've done that with the fire department, we've done that with other typed reports over time.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for us to see that. Yeah, yeah, that's okay, putting that out there and any, any web application we can put it on, that's great. We're, we're happy to answer any calls, answer any emails or whatever. So I think just in my closing, we got good people doing good things and we want to continue that. We need to be competitive to keep those, we don't want to hire bad, we'll run short before we ever hire people that are not good. And so that means overtime and fatigue and things we've been through before in the past. But the, the officers performed admirably, that much contact to lower the violent crime, to contact this many people over last year with only one absolute formal complaint and it wasn't substantiated, so it wasn't sustained. So we get very few external complaints, we do a lot of policing of our own people and try to get things on track. And keep good people whenever we can and make a good environment for them to work in. I, I think we've, we have a good formula, it isn't perfect, we lost one to go to Las Cruces and that was a $30,000 sign on bonus. I'll accept if you want that to be my policy, but I don't think we'll go for that. But, you know, we have, we have one in competition for a federal job, those are things we just can't compete with. But we can be better than the communities around us for different reasons. And so we're going to keep that culture going and that, that kind of mission statement going.
One thing I was going to mention that I, I noticed, I think it was probably in the 2020 when the car thefts were up. But if we could continue doing that is like the social media posts and citizen awareness when cars are being stolen or broken into a lot, we had a lot of cars broken into a couple of years ago. I saw recently, we've had mail stolen, just that social media alert so citizens can be aware and watch out for things going on.
Yeah, and now, if I, we, we're using the Facebook as much as that reaches, it reaches a lot of people outside the community. But I think with the text messaging that we have, if there's a message that we want to send out right away to anybody who signed up there, it could be a limited number. But we'll try everything that we can, the mail thefts, you know, that was a, an area ring and thanks to KCK and, and some of the communication from our detective. We got the guy, we got the van, that sort of thing and, and now it's a matter of prosecuting. And so we're, we're going to move forward on our end, we, we sorted through a lot of mail, not being mail post people. We sorted through a lot of mails just, just today and backed up for evidence and finding out where the victims are. One first move that we made is area canvassing, it's early in the morning, folks, and we might have knocked on some doors and, and we say, hey, you know, here's your mail, is this your mail? We may not be able to give it back to you, we can't put it back in the mailbox because that's not, we're not federal postal employees. And so we keep that for evidence and that's one thing pending prosecution. And so we tried to contact with a number of people that we could and, and then the word spread and people were calling us too. So that's how it works and that was our first priority. How do we talk to these folks and let them know that their mail may have stolen, the check that they were waiting on may have gotten thrown on the road because a lot of that happens.
I have one last question if you don't have any more.
You go ahead.
What was our employee count in 2014 and our employee count in 2022?
Okay, 14, we were probably three shorter, you know, in, there was a time where we had some layoffs, we added one through a higher grant. And we, I don't know, as we, we added one more and that was in recent two year period. So we're, we're right at, I think overall 21 staffed, that includes the CSO. And so we're looking at what, 19, 18, 19 on, on the sworn side because we have a, an executive assistant that's a civilian side. So I think that's about right, am I, I got the count right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a security officer that works for the court, works, but through us.
Yeah, so, so basically what the story is, we're doing a lot more work. Everybody's workload is higher now than it was in 2014.
Yeah, and, and if you recall, we did try to compete for a cops grant. I think KCK outdid us, they, they got, you know, 12 or 21 or some great number and we got zero. So, but in the, in one county, it's hard, you're competing for the same funds and that sort of thing. And, and quite frankly, in 2008, we didn't have any money, it was easy. And now we're, we're, we're in good shape financially and that's the first thing they look at is like, okay, what's your crime like? What's your finances like, that sort of thing? And we're doing good, I mean, it's not great, but we're doing okay. And, and so they looked at that and they said, you know, hey, you got a good purpose here, but in the end, you know, we're, we're not going to fund that. So it's, it's really about the economy and, and the crime rate, that's what we're doing. Could we use more people, the mayor and I specifically have talked about that and that's why we asked for the one in the cops grant. But we, we said we weren't going to try to get the funding from the general fund if the cops grant didn't come through, we know the balance, we know, we need equipment, we need, we need to pay the people, keep the lights on. So we know that as well. But if we have continuing trends like this, you're going to get some work fatigues and vigilant fatigue and that sort of thing, especially when we run short and the demand is so high.
And the last thing I had for you and, and what reminded me of it when we talked about Dollar General theft. And it might be a strange comparison, but when we were going over the uniform code ordinances, if I remember right, if someone stole a vehicle and it was under, say, a thousand dollars. That would be treated similar to theft because it wasn't over the certain threshold.
Yeah, it's a misdemeanor, it's just not a felony. So you got a brand new Mercedes Benz and yeah, it's probably going to go to the district court. But you've got an older car that just doesn't have the value, that's going to be a misdemeanor that we will cite into the municipal court instead. So you've got the district court with the felonies and a municipal court will take care of the misdemeanors. But in the end, I don't know what the threshold, we will report that to the state of Kansas and they may have a, a, a threshold in which they report it to the federal government. Whether or not that particular auto theft gets reported as a uniform crime report. And it very well may, they may want to know whether that car is worth a dollar or a hundred thousand, they may want to know that.
Well, one thing that was concerning to me in looking over that is, we have a lot of folks in our community that that might be their only way to work. And so they get a car stolen, all of a sudden it starts the spiral where they can't get to work and they can't pay their bills. And then it's, it's just hard to get out of that where that would impact somebody so significantly for it to be the same level as stealing a Snickers bar from the Dollar General. And not to say that that's okay either, but it's not. So I just wondered if it might be something that the council could discuss or, or you and the, the attorney down the road maybe give us a solution or ideas that maybe we could at least be as severe as possible on that misdemeanor to make sure that, that we can enforce that to the highest level possible.
Well, and, and again, statutorily, these are thresholds built by the legislature, you know, and it's passed. But what we couldn't do and what you're really maybe talking about is that we want to set a policy for our court to take them as seriously as possible. Maybe even saying, the judge has certain, of course, authorities and things, but I think that the body here, unless I'm wrong, somebody correct me. But could set, we want the policy to be that, that if you're arrested and booked, the bond is maybe this much and say that it's, it's absolute. And we can set the maximum fine for that, or the jail period, right? Because it gives us up to, municipal court has up to, zero to how many days and zero to how much dollars, right? And, and within that range, this body is the policy body. And I think they could say, by policy, we want you to do these things because of these particular issues. Now, whether or not we can, I think we can be more stringent with the law, but we can't be less than the law. That's what I would, I'm not.
Can we do minimum?
I'm sorry?
Can we say instead of up to so many days, can we say a minimum of so many days or a minimum?
I think really semantics, the verbiage, you know, you want to clear some of that legally as to form and, and to the semantics. But you could say, you know, we want the minimum upon conviction, right? You could set that, we want the minimum to be a thousand dollars. And then maybe you, you would hope that there's some restitution if it's damaged and lost beyond, that they can't reclaim it or something like that.
Well, I, I don't know if that would be something the council would be interested in, but I know that definitely to me seems worth, maybe having you guys bring us some options so that that is treated to a higher standard than just a petty theft of the.
We can definitely look at that, but you're running by ordinance?
If that's what you guys think would be, I think that it's addressed in the ordinance, so that's my understanding, but you guys are the.
UPOC.
Well, I'm saying you want to set a, a minimum by ordinance, not the city prosecutor's recommendation to the municipal judge.
I believe so.
I, I think there's more than one way to accomplish what we may want, but I think her, the position would be is, this is, it's not a felony, but it's serious enough that it impacts people's lives and we want the punishment, should they be found guilty, that, to set some sort of minimum standard. That the prosecutor cannot, would not be able to then negotiate a lower standard of some sort, that they would have to meet, say, okay, you want to plead guilty. Then there would be this threshold of it's, okay, absolute a thousand dollars, 500 in restitution or whatever it might be. With, within the scope of our parameters of our ordinance, which allows sentencing and fining up to these, from zero to this maximum, from zero to that maximum. Depending on the fine and the, and the jail time that they could be issued.
And, and I'd leave that to you guys just to maybe bring us some, some things to discuss and, and find a good.
Yeah, if you want, if by law, if you want to set a, a minimum fine, you can do that in the ordinance. And that's just a different conversation than kind of the discretion that the prosecutor has to have a working policy of the, the recommendation. But it's going to be X, Y, Z, but this municipal judge would be able to part of that.
That would be in addition, or, yeah, in addition to the UPOC, right?
Yeah, it'd be amending the ordinance.
Amending, I mean, for, for example, I mean, we have a standard, so in our code of ordinances, I think it's section 1.09. Basically says that any violation of our code of ordinances is punishable by a fine, I think up to a thousand dollars. I'd have to go back to it. Or 180, 179 days in jail or both, right? So that, that's kind of that broad one, but even if you look at the UPOC or the STL, some of those items in there already have a set minimum. They may say 250 or 500. So in those cases, that is the minimum. And so I think as the city attorney is saying, if that particular item in the UPOC does have a minimum and we want to set a minimum. We would do that in the adopting ordinance for the UPOC to say, we're amending the unified public offense code, whatever that section is, by setting a minimum. You know, minimum fine amount, because we have other things where we have set, right? I mean, if there's not a fine set, then it kind of diverts back to this broad policy. But some items have a specific fine to it, right? First offense is this and second offense is this much more, third offense, you know, this and this, and so that's possible.
One circumstances may be agree, more egregious than others, so you give the discretion to the judge, but at the minimum, it's 500, 800, 1,000, whatever that might be. And then there may be some leeway that, I'm not giving the minimum, I'm going to add to that or something.
Right, yeah, I, I just, if the council's open to that discussion, maybe bringing us some options in the future, in the near future.
For specific violations?
Out of that, under a thousand dollars, is it a thousand dollars?
Theft, yeah, in the subsection motto.
We can take a look at that and, and generally the, the, you know, the UPOC STL come up in a couple, you know.
Summer.
After the legislature gets done rearranging everything and we figure out what it is that they've done. Then that's generally when those, those get redone and updated and try to bring them in compliance with the statute. And then those come back before us for, for our adoption process.
Something we need done for sure.
Did anyone else have questions for Chief?
Anything else? Appreciate, appreciate your support, thank you very much.
All right, item 10, discussion regarding priorities for the 2024 annual budget. This one, I'm gonna kind of take the, the lead on just a little bit. When the original draft came out, it had the council or governing body entering into a contract for construction management team for the Riverfront Park project. And so when that came up, I just thought it would be a good idea to have just council discussion regarding priorities before we jump into another project contract, just to make sure that we are, we have an opportunity to, to just talk about what our council. Like a prioritization of the budget, what are, what are we looking at? We have a lot of irons in the fire as it is now, 98th Street's coming up really soon, city hall, fire department, police department, public works building. The, the trail project that we just, we just initiated. And then potentially a Richland or other street projects that'll be coming up in the future. And so I just thought, you know, before having a construction management team come and maybe make a presentation. It would probably be a good use of the council time to just have that discussion as a governing body and decide, kind of prioritize these things. And decide, do we want to jump into a contract with a construction management team now? Do we want to wait until we're in phase one of some of these, like the municipal buildings project? I just wanted to counsel a chance to, to have that discussion. Well, well, we're all here since this is the opportunity that we can have discussions in a public meeting.
And Mayor, if I, if I can add a little bit to that, just for, for context, just so everybody knows. So, I mean, we're, we're effectively talking about our capital projects, right? And, and as we know, you know, sometime probably this summer, we'll be going into a bond issuance. So, and I think that's kind of where this discussion, partially was, we were looking at the construction manager, really to give us some more detailed pricing around the, the Riverfront Park project. But the point was, a, a good point is, but is that something we're going to be doing 12 months from now, three years from now? How, how do all the pieces work together, I think is part of the discussion. So just to give you some idea of what I see kind of on the forefront from a dollar standpoint, right? Is right now, the 98th Street project, the one that's, that's funded and where final plans are being put together. The city engineer, we're making a slight change in the base because cement's gotten more expensive and maybe three is less expensive. So you know what, they got to revise it, but we're, we're looking at that probably, that project will have to fund probably about 3.1 to 3.2 million dollars right now is what that looks like. Originally, we thought we were going to be closer to 4 million, so there, there might be a little bit there. This, the, the other item that we know will come up quickly is the trail project we talked about tonight. So that's going to, you know, we're probably going to be 3, 400,000 dollars there. You, you know, the, the park project right now, I mean, really what we're talking about as far as construction manager, to get us some estimates is fairly low, it's 5,000 dollars. I mean, that's a really big take, but, but the question. It's $5,000. I mean, that's a really take back, but the question is, what would phase one cost us? That's a little bit. Sure on, but it's several million. I mean, I think it's, you know, I think the overall project. From the architect's estimate right now is around 7.3. And so what we're trying to do is break that down and get a, a more succinct cost. And then as we look at. The second phase of 98th street, so that next section down, which we're, we're probably. Two years out, that'll probably be on a future bond issue. But right now we're looking at about 2.7 million for that item. Our cost, right? Things that we, we have to pay for. And then it's really, I mean, we know if we want to continue to do roads at the level we've been doing roads. And, and I'll use Richland, we're going to talk about these a little bit more. You know, if we want to, it, it's one thing to put asphalt on the ground, but it doesn't really fix the roads. And some of those we need to put asphalt down to get longevity and some of them we need to be taking a more advanced step. So are we going to issue a million or $2 million for, I don't want to say general road improvements? And so, and then again, I think we've talked about the public facilities. I mean, you know, we looked at numbers between 12 and 15 million, you know, we don't know how valued those. We're in that process now, right? Of selecting architect, we've got the construction manager. And so it's, it's, you know, we are talking millions, millions and millions, right? Now, that's not something we pay in one, one year, thankfully. We, we talked about bonding capacity, so we know we have capacity. But I think again is, but where do those stack up? You know, it, it, are there certain projects? I mean, obviously the first phase of 98th street is pretty much at the top of the priority list because it's going to go out to bid. So there's not really, there's not really, you know, there's not really anything there that you could say, oh, I mean, I guess you could say stop, let's not do it. But that probably not, would not be a wise decision or one that's recommended. I, I think that from the, the discussion the mayor and I have is to try to get some feedback on or. Where do these priorities fall out broadly? And again, Mayor, you may have some other comments, but I just wanted to put some numbers around those. I mean, I, I didn't add all those up, but you know, you're, right? Just those, you're seven, eight million dollars.
It's about 20.
20. Okay. Yeah. And that's about what we know our broad bonding capacity allows, right? Somewhere at 40, 25 million. Don't want to issue it all at once. I mean, I, again, I know we looked and said, what would happen if you did it all at once? I never felt that that was a likely scenario, but, but, but you're still going to issue. We're, we're probably in this next bond issue at least into the $4 million range of bonding. In, in this current year, issuing $4 million for the bonds.
And then a little bit more piece of clarification on the, on the Riverfront Park project. It's, I mean, that the whole price tag that was kind of just kind of ballparked by StanTech is at seven and a half, 7.7 billion. What I think the intention is, is to get firm costs around what phase one of that project would be. And then move forward with that piece of it in, in some kind of future bond issuance to not a whole $8 million chunk all at once for the whole project. But identify what those sections are in phase one and then move forward with phase one and then kind of plan from there.
And how much was the phase one portion of the seven and a half million?
So that, that's what we don't know. So with the original lineup of the agenda was the enter into the essentially add an addendum to the, with Vogel Anderson as our construction manager. To get us to that estimate of a price. There's been a lot of work that StanTech has done from a design document standpoint. Quite frankly, a lot farther along than, than some of these other projects, just because we've been working on it for a number of years. And then using that, they would be able to firm up what, you know, a good estimate of what phase one would be for that project.
Did StanTech not have an estimate on phase one then?
I mean, it's, it, they've got it broken out into different sections. The last estimate that we got were, was from a cost standpoint was in late, I would say November 2021. So we'd have to kind of pull out. It was not, at that time, it wasn't thought of, let's think about the phasing of it. It was, let's look at this whole project and then figure out the phasing essentially at this point.
And I, I think we, we turn to Vogel Anderson because right there on the construction side of this. And just again, their fee, we weren't totally sure, but, but I mean, it came back. They, they, you know, just like they have for our other stuff on hourly rate, but they have it at $5,000 is what they think. And what they would do is go through these plans and these estimates. And really get it down to a, I, if you were going to construct today. And get it to a, you know, 5% plus or minus number here, you know, they would sit down, someone with us and the architect say, okay. This makes logic to be in phase one, this doesn't, uh, hey, I mean, again, I, that, this is what construction manager does. You know, we've done a couple of these projects and we use this kind of bathroom product and we know it works better than, than maybe what you've put out there. And we can do that at some better pricing. I mean, right? That's what they bring to the table. Versus sending it out to bid and see what the costs are. And I, you know, I wouldn't want to send something out to bid when we don't know that we have the dollars. I mean, partially, right? We can't issue, we, we, we can't enter a contract for a construction if we don't have the dollars in hand. I mean, just legally, we can't do that. So partially it's getting more knowledge around the park. But also, I mean, I just make sure we're all on the same page that that is a project we want to move forward. And what's maybe some of the timing of moving forward? I mean, we've had CPPS board, they've been very active. I mean, again, been working on this for a couple of years. I don't think you can say park or road or road or this. I mean, we're always going to have multiple projects, but just. If, if there's some, you know, broader priorities here or something feels higher than another, then that's, you know, that's why. I mean, again, we, we're pretty, we're pretty, we're pretty consistent right now on being able to put. You know, 300,000 or so a year into our streets. But, uh, but you know, that really depletes pretty much all our dollars. We know we're going to get some sci-fi, but we don't know what that mix is going to be going past this year. And so, uh, you know, at some point we, we, we can't fund all our road projects with, with STP because they, they're not eligible. And I mean, it's kind of like what Steve said earlier. I mean, we're really doing good stuff and we're really making great strides. The downside with doing good stuff and great strides is like, oh, you're doing good stuff and great strides, somebody else needs the money, right? I mean, we've been very effective in bringing, so to speak, bringing those federal dollars back to our community. We'll continue to, to strive to do that, but somewhat gets harder as we move. Anyway.
And so I think to say, open up discussion a little bit with council is, is twofold. One is the park's about a seven and a half million dollar project. And, um, we, I mean, I think we all want the park to go, to move forward. Do we want to move forward on a construction management contract? Before we are through phase one on city hall, fire department, police department, public works, until we know what that is going to look like.
One of the challenges of planning is you're planning for the next 10, 15, 20, 30 years. And, and so you have to keep all these balls in the air at the same time. And so we're, right now we're looking at the park projects, 5,000 bucks. It's, it's, it's an extremely nominal amount of money to keep our vision moving forward. And keeping our people looking forward, keeping people hopeful and actually knowing what phase one would cost. And so you, you, I don't think you can, you can't say 7.3 because that could be over the next 20 years. And so, but phase one, which would be a nice place to start the park. And, and get people involved, give, give, get a great, uh, people really proud of their city. And bring in families that, that can go down there and enjoy it and, and be hopeful for the future. And who knows, the, the donation fund, I can't remember what that's called. But things like that could serve very well in the future. Once people see, wow, this is pretty awesome. How much does it cost to do the next thing? Well, maybe we can get some businesses to pony up and maybe the citizens, we could have a fun drive, we could do this, we could do that. But without a vision, people perish. And so we've got to keep that vision out there. My, my priorities would be obviously 98th street, number one, because we've already committed to it. Number two, right behind it would be public works and, and city hall. And, and then, you know, and the trail, you got to work that trail in there as well. The 90, the 98th street, number two, we got a couple, we got some time. Was that about 18 months or so?
Well, we have, our intention is we'll probably enter into a design contract in summer, fall this year. Which puts us in a construction, probably 2026 timeframe, right? And that's when we'd have to have funding.
Right.
It, it, it is certainly the farthest.
Right.
Out relative to the, to the road projects.
I, I would think park would be number three, but I don't even think we ought to consider because it's such a nominal amount of money that we're talking about.
I want to be clear. So the purpose of what? The purpose with Vogel Anderson is to help identify, be clear on phase one and get better pricing. So I mean, again, I'll, I'll use something in here.
It's just keeping that project moving forward.
You talk about something like these history station. I know that's a nice, that's a nicety, right? But you know, you got built into the, into that, into that overall budget by the architect of over a quarter million dollars. That's probably not a first phase kind of thing. I, I mean, first phase or, you know, what? Infrastructure, parking, playground, trail, I mean, the overlook, remember we all looked at the overlook and we're all like, that's, that's phase three. I mean, that's a, that's a million dollar decision package just on its own.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think personally what we were trying to do with Vogel Anderson was not to. Not to get into construction.
Correct.
But really it's pre-construction. And, and so we can come to you with better information and say, okay, phase one is really this. Now, do we want to move forward now to move forward in six months? We want to move forward in a year. Obviously the farther out that you get it, you're going to have to make assumptions. On what's that going to cost three years down the road? But relative to the cost, uh, 5,000 versus, you know, something. I, I think it would be money well spent to get their eyes on it and take the plan. I mean, you know, we have pretty well full. I, I don't know that they're, they're not ready to totally bid, but pretty much they're construction ready planned. Now, there may still be some pieces that need to be looked at and, and nobody's, we haven't had that side to look at it. They may come along and say, hey, that's a great idea, but think about if you did this and did this over here, that this would, this might save some money, right? Your, your 7.3 million dollar project, really, you could do all this for six and a half. Or they may say, you so way under, you, you all are using 7.3 and this is nine. That, that's my fear. And, and we don't want to go out into a market to borrow money. We'll never know exact, but we don't want to go out and borrow money and borrow too much or too little. I mean, we want it to be at least in, in the realm. And we've generally done pretty well in, in doing that now. But roads are a little easier. I mean, I think roads are. V H C does a good job of estimating, but roads generally, because they're, they're at pretty long scale. Then when you get to build them, they're, they're, you know, boom, you're building them. So you, you asphalt doesn't, you know, asphalt, concrete stuff doesn't go up 40% this week and down 60 next. You, you have a pretty solid, I think some of these other things.
My number three would probably be, um, roads with Richland, Richland's disastrous. And, and it, it needs, it's going to need a major repair, it's going to be need to be rebuilt. So that'd be not my number three or four. Those would be my, I don't really want to go any further than that because we're talking a ways down the road. But you're asking for priorities right now, those would be mine in that order.
I, I'm in agreement with that. Absolutely. It would be 98, public facilities and parks, right? Are they?
The roads.
The roads, yeah, the street.
The parks is such, it's 5,000 bucks. We're not talking about a million here. It's, we're spending $5,000 to find out what it's going to cost to do it.
And so do we know, we don't, who knows what's in phase one? Cause we as a council, I, I don't know what's in phase one.
Yeah, I think that's, I think, I think we need some clear, I mean, that, that's part of the discussions between the architect and staff. And I, I think I'm the CPPS board to be involved and, and, and again, having the constructor. Cause he, they may, they may have items and say, you really, I mean, it's cheaper to put this water line all the way through the park. Versus stopping it and then extending it or something. And again, I'm just, I'm using ideas. I, I think we want their knowledge is what we're really buying there.
And, and there's, what StanTech has done is essentially put together a narrative of what phase one would logically look like. I mean, your, your improvements to the parking lot, the permanent restroom facilities, some of the trail improvements, the new playground feature out there. Infrastructure, utilities, items like that, and a package that into a narrative. And it provided that to Vogel Anderson to do the work that we're talking about to start, you know. Either reprioritizing within that narrative, within that phase one narrative, based on what they know about the project. And either, you know, move things around based on their expertise or say, no, this looks good. And, you know, for $5,000, we can, we could start putting some numbers to it. So you know, as a, as a body, you know, what that project would look like.
After serving for 12, 13 years on the cemetery board and then the CPPS board, I would trust them with my life. Those people squeeze every eagle till it screams. So I would trust them with whatever decision recommended, recommendation they have, I'd trust them completely.
Well, the concern that I, I have though is when Mike's bringing up a quarter of a million dollars on historical markers. And that's in the plan. And so.
Yeah, I, I'm not as first on the plans. I'll be, I'd be going by.
But, but something like that, I feel like it would, might be beneficial to come to council. When we're talking about mul, several mills and historical markers. While that might be really beneficial, it might be something that before we spend the money, we want to see, okay, what's exactly in phase one? How committed are we to phase one?
Well, that's what that part, that's what that $5,000 gives us.
Yeah, I, I think it helps us answer those questions, right?
So you're giving them the full project and they're determining which phases it goes in.
They have, I, I'm going to, I mean, they've been given a broad scope that is Vogel Anderson. Cause we needed some pricing from them because they're like, well, am I design, am I looking at? I mean, they have the plans for the whole project because that's how it's been designed. It's, it, it's so they can look at it and say, well, that makes sense or doesn't. The, the architects said, we think these are the components that make sense. There could be some items, let's just say that it, oh, that's really good pricing. Maybe we want to add, I'll just say the fish cleaning station. We decided that really is important to put in phase one. I mean, right now, most of those types of amenities are, I mean, I think as was said, you know, bathrooms, parking, utilities. Infrastructure pieces, but even, even I was talking to Vogel Anderson today about the city project. And they're, and they're like going, well, what about, you know, I mean, are we doing? All the landscaping on the land or regrading all of the land? I mean, you know, they're asking questions that, that at this point, I don't know that we can answer.
Broadly speaking, what phase one has been conceptualized as is in the narrative that we provided to, that StanTech has provided to Vogel Anderson would be. The permanent restroom facilities, the, the shelter kind of overlooked attachment to that, that little plaza area. The utility extensions, parking lot, pre-working and demolition where needed. The new walks, it would be adjacent to right south of the, um, parking lot area signage and the playground. That's broadly what has been provided. I mean, essentially if you think of it east to west. The eastern parts of the project, less the fishing improvements, the fishing and the dock improvements. So essentially kind of that, that first kind of access entry points to the park in phase one. Later phases would be improvements to fishing and boating and those kinds of amenities. And then phase three would be kind of the, the more of the, the work done around the actual river for the overlook and some of those other items.
Okay. And so we're going to get the money or the, is, is for the construction management. So I think we've heard from a couple of the council as far as timing. If everyone's comfortable moving forward with that before we hear anything about municipal buildings.
Yeah, the 5,000 bucks is them.
And just on the, on the municipal piece, right? It's the part we, we, you know, have got with Vogel Anderson again. So the, the schedule is that we will have the, you know, there's two parts to that, right? First, the, the, the two parts include architectural selection and options with. with concept pricing for that project, right? Again, I I know there've been a lot of things bounced around about, you know, one, two, three buildings, all of that, but but basically, what's it, what is it we're going to decide to do, the path and firm pricing at? When I think about it in the in the world of of streets, you generally have like 30, 60, 90%, right? 90% when you go to bid, you put flat feet. So pretty much to get everything up to that 30% level. So you can physically see how things are laying on the property. We have the the, you know, the engineering pieces done, the surveying pieces done, not necessarily design engineering, but, you know, where are the utilities? What do we have to do with them? Is it grading? Is there stormwater? All those pieces? And we have firm pricing so that then this body can say, yeah, so architectural selection by end of May, that piece done by end of August. So this year timeframe, we have that funding already in place, so it doesn't impact any bond program that we need to do. Also, we have the funding for that work in in the bank. So we don't, it wouldn't impact bonding. What would impact bonding would be a future bond to build something, something or some things, right?
And so will the estimates that are brought back to us by construction management team? How long are those good for?
I mean, they'll generally build in, they'll build in some inflation factors in there. Once you get to the, when they get, so ultimately, you get to a guaranteed maximum price. At that point, it's locked in. That's generally when you're closer to that 90, 90. So maybe at 30%, they're going to build in, you know, a 20% contingency. And when you get to 60%, that contingency may come down to 12 or 15%. And when you get to 90, you know, there, you know, maybe it's a 5% contingency generally is going to be built in. But at that point, they say, this is what it's going to cost to build this. We we've talked to the people that put the steel up. We've got bids for the drywall. We got the painter. I mean, they basically have all the bitter pieces done. And it's just, yes, build it, you know, start, start turning the dirt. So that process, you probably all of that process, we're probably closer to a year out. I mean, to to turn in dirt. I I mean, again, it can go as fast or, I mean, I mean, we we make it go faster, but we're in a public process and understand that there's, you know, that's input. So I I think that's where we're where we're at. But we're funding of the public facilities as it relates to those. Everything we need to move that forward is funded and there's no additional dollars we need to go out and borrow.
And and one thing that the Fraser mentioned earlier, during their presentation was and something we'll keep in mind, I don't know if you all have been hearing from residents as well that are scared about their tax bill that's coming up, is he said, if we live, if we leave our mill levies the same, that's on average a $900 increase per household. And so when we're looking at taking on debt for 98th Street, taking on debt for fire department, taking on debt for police department, taking on debt for public works, taking on debt for streets, taking on debt for the trail project. And then we've got phase one of a park, which is, we we just want to keep that in mind. We want to keep balls rolling. We want to have great things in store for our community, but we also want to make sure that we're not overreach, overspending what what we can do. We don't want to be the more of a tax burden on them, I think, at this point. And that's why I always wanted to hear from council a little bit and saying, okay, if it comes down to it, at some point, we have to have a limit. At some point, we have to say, okay, we might need to hold up just a little bit and and see where that goes. And so that's what I just wanted to hear from you all, what your priorities were, just so we could have that discussion.
I think we've held up long enough on the public facilities. Our employees prove that they deserve nice facilities. And I think that that our citizens deserve that.
So would that be your number one priority?
I think I I think I want to go public. And then 98th Street. And I think that would spur, you know, with the park coming in after shortly after, I think that could spur a pretty good development down there.
98th Street number two?
I think 98th.
It's already in the works. It's in the works. It's a done deal.
It's a done deal.
Well, I think I think I put the public facilities over the park, actually.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Because these people deserve it and our our city. We're working in a building that's costing more to operate than than it's worth.
That was the thing though. I think though, too, when you talk to the people out there and they could care less about another park. They want their road fixed. And plus, it's wear and tear on our police cars, fire trucks, public work stuff. And then you, we're not factoring in, we're not factoring that in to like Richland. People didn't live on there, I'd say close it because it is awful. I mean, I know we're talking about that, but I mean, people would rather see some of their streets fixed than than a park.
I I would go to your to the comment about the tax rate, if you remember. I mean, we've tried to build relative to the debt side to hold that rate flat, right? And I'd say flat, I I, you know, it doesn't mean no, but but I mean, right, when we've built those those strategies, it's keeping it around that, I think, 11 to 12 mil, right? So that part is more stable. I think, you know, the adjustments of mill levies, you know, that'll be part of the budget discussion. You're really talking about the operating side. So the things we're talking about from a goal from staff and financially is we we don't want to, you know, that's right, timing of that. We don't want to take a bunch of debt on that's going to spike that rate up and then drop off over time. We want to try to keep that rate level. And as you know, the last couple of years, we we've left that rate setting where it's set at, and it has built up a little bit of reserve there so that we don't get that spike when you go out to issue debt. Right? We're trying to avoid that. So for a taxpayer, right, it's not all of a sudden they get one year. It's like, oh, my, I got this big spike and it's all caused by debt. And then it falls off in two years and then they get another spike. You know, we're we're trying to, I mean, everything we've done is to play it around, not.
Right. And that that was one thing that I was thinking of when we were talking is, I remember the bond council came in and gave us a presentation and he said, if we keep it and and we don't always know what's going to happen in the future, but if we keep it right around 17 million, when we're looking at these street and building, municipal building projects, then that wouldn't have a tax burden impact on our residents. And so that's why when we're looking at about 20 million before any future street projects, I'm going, okay, we might need to prioritize as a governing body and make sure that we're all on the same page. So.
Can I get clarification on the city city facilities?
Okay.
What does that include?
Well, we've talked about, and there's really four, I would say, right? I mean, you've got police.
And I'm sorry, because they're mentioning city facilities, but I think councilman member Adams mentioned public works separate.
Right.
Well, city hall, public work or public safety.
Public safety, but then public works. Is that going to be, that's a separate, isn't it?
That that'd be likely a separate, that'd be a separate location. We we do have funds.
But it's included in the city facilities.
Yeah, I mean, not necessarily in that 12 to 15 million dollars, right? But that that's a
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I that's a relatively low.
There's a lot of people.
A low cost facility, right?
Not liking it where it's located right now.
Right. No, I don't like it. I don't think anybody likes it there. But I mean, we we set aside money in in the last or two bond issues ago, right? We set aside money, it's still there for acquisition of land and general engineering. So that money's still there. That project could move forward. It's it's isolating that land and it may need to have some of those costs in the near future. But that's a, you know, I mean, I say relatively low cost. I mean, it's a I'll say a $2 million project, right? A million and a half, two. I mean, it it's not a it's mainly an operational facility for equipment and parking and maintenance and, you know, some staff out there. But when we're talking about generally this city city facilities on this location, it plays fire and administrative services.
Okay, I just wanted clarification.
Those types of things, right? So absolutely.
Do we also have questions or comments or suggestions? Okay.
Okay.
Oh, number 11. Here's staff presentation related to the plan. 2023 street maintenance project.
You're up.
I'm up to mine. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've got a list here. This is a list we brought to you on February 13th of the proposed streets. We got a little feedback from you. We discussed them at that meeting. We've come up with four locations that we would like to, are planning to move forward on. Richland Avenue is one of those. First of all, we've got Speaker Road and Second Street. Both of those will be something we can get out of bid relatively quick. We're looking at just doing a pulverizing place where they'll come in, tear up the the pavements that they're graded out, get a little more subgraded if needed, and then get some asphalt on top of it and get us a a much better street for those locations. Richland Avenue, we've looked into that. I think we're looking at trying to just go with some stormwater improvements this year and maybe some. We might be looking at some right away acquisitions, things of that nature, prepping us for a much bigger project next year. We've got four stormwater crossings on that road and stormwater has been probably the reason that road is the way it is. You've got to get that water off the road and keep it off the road. And that's something we'd like to to work on, probably get with B H C, see if we can get some some plans together. We want think, the things we do, we want to match up with what our long term plan is going to be there. Because if we do go curb and gutter, which I think that's the the way we're looking, we're going to need to get some stormwater inlets, things in there that are going to take care of stormwater off that pavement. Kansas Avenue, we're looking at only coming up about 1,300 feet from the west end. That road, and I didn't get that map printed out. I thought about it when I come in here. The road actually sits kind of towards the north side of the right of way. There's really not much right of way on the north side at all. We would like to shift it south. That doesn't mean we may not want to try to acquire some right of way on the north to make that a more centered road. But there's utilities on the south that are going to have to be moved to do that. We've got utility poles. There's a gas line there. I believe there's even a water line in that area we'd want to check on. But those things are going to have to take place and have it graded before we would be able to do much. So this year, we want to get the utilities relocated. Probably try and go ahead and get into the the right of way acquisition if we desire to go that direction. Just try and get things prepped up to where we can get that west end at least taken care of. What I had measured out was almost, it's not probably quite half, but it's about halfway up the road from the west end. And then that way, that east end, we could maybe come back in a couple of years and maybe try and finish it up. So we've got a complete road there. Because there are some bad spots on that east end, too. They're just not near as bad as the west end. But those are, those are the four roads we've come up with. Budgeting wise, Speaker and Second Street come to a total of about 170,000 between the two. Richland, the money for that is in some bond money that we already have for stormwater drainage. So I mean, the money's there. So it's something we can jump into and start getting that taken care of. And then Kansas Avenue would also come out of the the money from this year's budget. It's 160,000. So if you've got any questions, I'd be more happy to go through any more that you like.
Is this the order that the roads are going to be worked on or is that just listing them?
That's just listing them. A speaker and second will go out. I'd like to have those out to bid no later than mid, late April. Those are pretty simple projects to have someone come in and do. Richland, again, we'll probably work with B H C on some stormwater improvements, just to make sure they're going to line up with long term, what we need there. And then Kansas, again, the first step we're going to have to take is talk to getting utility companies. And that's going to be the probably the longest process of getting those moved, especially with utility poles on that south side.
Do cities usually have expense in that when it comes to the easements of the utilities of moving them back?
As long as you're in the right of way, no. So so what happens on Kansas Avenue? You go from kind of where I I call Kansas in Kansas, you know, at at the intersection up there. I think that right of way is around 60 feet or so. So there's plenty. Then you come to the middle section and either through plating or something, there's about 50 feet. And then kind of the highlighted area, it drops down to 40 feet and that's where it's circuit. But all all the open areas to the south side of it. So we've talked about, we may need a little on the the north side, just really more to get the alignment cleaned up and get the get the road centered a little bit. So I don't think there's significant, it's not like we need to go by 20 and 30 feet. If we're talking 10 feet, maybe. And it just allow, because when you get down on that end, the road just keeps narrowing down to effectively it's one lane. We need more space on that south side of it. But there's a big hill there and and that's where the the gas lines in that hill and the poles are pushed up there. So there there are plenty of existing right of way on the south side to move those utilities back. So I don't see that we would have any expenses related to utility relocations unless they're just something unknown.
Or at the mercy of the utility company on when they get it done.
Yeah, we we, I mean, they have an obligation, right, for if we change the grade. Basically, we do anything with the street, change grades, paving, da, 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 da. Then they are obligated to relocate their utilities at no expense within the right of way. Now, so it's either there's right of way existing or you have to acquire it. But from what we've seen, that's there's, those poles are probably 15 feet or better inside the right of way. So they they could be moved back 10 to 15 feet to the back of that right of way, which would then that's what they take care of us, right? It's just timing. They never like to do it, you know, they 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 want to put it on the ten year plan. And so you just have to push. That's the, I mean, again, the rest of the, I mean, it if we can get that back and get that base built there, you know, maybe it's a a overlay of the whole street at that point, right? We don't see that. I mean, that's probably not a street where we need to go in and put curb and gutter. I mean, it's, I mean, again, I think everybody knows. I mean, it it's relatively low volume with the exception of of the the end of the road, right? I mean, there's not, I mean, there's a dozen or so homes access it. But we have a lot of roads like that and and we still need to keep those up. But it's probably not one that you would find that you want to invest those those costs at this point there. I mean, maybe down the road. But we, but if we can't get some width down there, all you're doing is is Band-Aid fixing a problem. We know the base is shot because you can look at it. And what do you do? So not to say there won't be pavement done to this year, it's just we have to focus on getting that utilities out of the right of way. And so we can grade it and and put the road in. It's just like Speaker and quite honestly, Speaker and Second Street. I mean, right, those are one lane for all intents and purposes, right? Where you're not going to get too lane, you're not going to get 24 feet because there's just nothing there. I mean, there's not enough room. So we'll get what we can get out of it. But it's not unlike, the process is very similar. And I know some of y'all were here somewhere, what we did on Fifth, Sixth, Seventh Street, High Street. And I guess that's Fifth Street going up the hill where, you know, you mill it, you can reshape it a little bit. You can help get the, put some crown back in it and get the water off of it. But you're not changing, there's no, we don't need to change the grade. I mean, it's it's not like we have big hills. It kind of, if you take Speaker, it kind of goes up and then it drops off, right? It's 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 pretty good. Second Street, it's flat. I mean, there's just there might not be, there might not be three inches of change from one end to the other of that road. It's just flat. And so you do what you, you know, you do as best you can. It's almost like I mean, they're just very limited what we can do. But the the paving services, as indicated by the P C I's and every other thing, are just horrid, you know? We did the same thing on 100th Street.
I was going to say, 100th Street is kind of a good example. You want to take a look at at what we're at, what we're talking about for Speaker and for Kansas is 100th Street.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good thing. I mean, we went in there three or four times and tried to patch and patch and patch and patch. And finally, we just said, I think that was also a pulverizing place as well. And we did a little bit of, you know, storm drain. But again, several years ago, when we did the bonds, we we issued around $400,000 for storm drain projects. This for this kind of stuff, right? And we have another one we're doing on 102nd that that's in process. You know, hopefully, we'll we'll probably tie those together because it's ready to go. So again, we tried to say, you know, you got this, you got 350,000 plus bond funds about what you have available to spend short of going out for debt, as we talked about earlier. So we're saying this is what we can do within that budget. But again, a Richland probably needs a bigger project put to it, but this has to get done either way. And so we have the funds, we can do it. either way, and so we have the funds, we can do it, we can move forward, make improvements. And again, if it's like most years, there'll be other places that we have to patch and mill and, you know, I'll call it large patching. It's not like, well, this is it, and we're not touching any other street and town. But these are kind of the priority for these dollars this year.
You will see a lot more patching this year. I mean, with us doing the stormwater on Richland, we're probably going to have to be out there filling some asphalt.
Yeah.
A lot of those places, there's going to be a lot more patching this year than probably you've seen in the past because the 98th Street that we chose not to go with is pretty poor. I went and looked at 102nd Street that the resident talked about. It needs some attention. So I mean, there's definitely a lot of places that we need to get out to, and the guys will just have to, patching is going to become one of our priorities.
Well, don't make Kansas Avenue too nice because it's like a drag strip, dude.
The place they're setting out, they got a weedy area that they're going to park in.
I think park behind my big gravel pile or just by a red light camera.
Want a couple of speed bumps in there?
Humps, yeah, looks like they did on Johnson Drive over there. They hill jump right there, right in front of my house.
So.
Yeah.
I never did.
Well, you're old. That's our plan, I mean, and we're going to move forward with that. I mean, I, again, it's in keeping with the budget and kind of, again, focusing from the last meeting, kind of pair of terms.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I know a lot of folks will be really excited to see more streets improved in our city. Okay, winding down. I was asked to give an update regarding the EverGee workshop, or not workshop, I'm sorry, public meeting.
Right.
And as everyone on the council knows, because I emailed you prior to that meeting, so you knew it was planned for, we had a meeting with EverGee asking for a variance. A lot of questions came up as far as the need of the variance, the finding of the variance. And so, and Mike, you can elaborate on this a little bit if you'd like. Our city manager asked that we actually hold off on having the public meeting at this point so we can get more information from EverGee to see if this is even a necessity at this time or not before we move forward. And so, just to give a update on that, we're just kind of waiting, and I don't know, Mike, if you wanted to add?
Sure, I'll give it just a very brief, so I mean, I think the question, I'm going to, you know, so as we all know, that they, I mean, the necessity of a substation for more power is needed or will be needed. I don't think that's an issue. As you know, they came forth with a plan on the site. That plan did not pass. And it wasn't until that that this new line all of a sudden is needed. And then, at least through our discussions, it's, you know, it's more than likely that the substation would end up on a property that we typically know as Compass 70, which is the Bonner Springs site. That's really where the power is first needed. I don't know that any final decisions have been made on that. I've been trying to get feedback on that. But if in fact that's where that's going to go to, then it really takes into question, well, what is the purpose of this big distribution line system? Because you distribute from the substation out. Now, I understand some point that maybe they want to connect those substations, but that route may go completely different once they make the site. I've spoken to a person higher up than the people that have been here, and they're like, yeah, I think that makes, I understand what you're saying, and that kind of starts making sense, but I need to do some internal discussions and things. What we know is, at least at this point, there's no project on the Compass 70 site, at least with public anyways, and from this guy, there's not a project that's imminent, right? They're not going to be starting construction on a building in the next 30 days. Once they have a building in play, they probably need power within about 12 months. And then the question is, well, how do those two things time? How does the substation building, and how much power is still available through BPU at that point? Yeah, everybody wants to, you know, pull off of BPU. EverGee wants to have its own substation, so all that makes sense. It's really a timing issue, and I think what we haven't gotten clarity on is what are those times? I mean, if it takes two to three years to build a substation, where are we at? What are we doing? When are we going to build it? You know you need it, why wait? Or have you decided you're not going to build it at all? Okay, but we'd kind of like to know what those broader plans. So that's really where we're at. So it didn't make a lot of sense to come have a public hearing or a public meeting to show this route of power lines, and six months later, nothing's happened, and they come back and say, well, we've decided to change the whole plan. And so I'll take responsibility for that. It was kind of like, well, it doesn't make a lot of sense to get everybody in a room talking about something that quite honestly may or may not happen. That's the best update I can give.
Very good. And did you have any other updates for us?
Don't go to Arizona in March because it's cold and rainy. As you know, I spent a few days in vacation. I was, I was there, and I was like, what happened to this? All this beautiful sunny weather, it didn't happen. So I do think Zach may want to make a note on his one item on there. Touch that, Zach. So, and maybe some positions on your two items.
Yeah, well, the main item that I do want to just make sure it is noted in your staff report and city council, or excuse me, city manager report under administration, but the decision by NPR to move forward with a 0% increase in our medical, dental, and vision coverage. There's some internal changes within NPR related to our third-party provider, and with that comes some health savings. There's some changes that are going to be as part of that, really just internal stuff that we'll manage as far as the substance of the plans and what the city's going to be offering. Really, nothing major at all. It's going to be the same plans, maybe some different names. But the big thing is it affects our employees is that what they could plan for this year is a 0% increase in those, in those grades. And we, NPR, I just want to stress, has been a really good partner for us. What they can offer from a staff support for our employees, if they've got questions on coverage, or just looping their members, Edwardville included, into the decision-making process is really an invaluable service, and it's the stability that they have offered over the last number of years. You know, I can't remember an increase that's been more than 6.5% over the last, you know, seven years or so, which is more than you can say for other kinds of coverage. It helps us from a budgetary standpoint, and obviously, it helps our employees from their own budgeting standpoint too. So I did want to make a note of that. And then also to point out, we have been filling some of our open positions. We should have two new folks joining the admin side of things in our customer service court position, and then the part-time deputy court position should be filled here in the next couple of weeks. So if you come into City Hall and you see some new faces, that's who they are. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Zach. Mr. Nye, did you have any updates for us tonight? Chief Mathies?
I did take delivery of the equipment that you approved for IT upgrades. So I have that, so that base is going to kick off with our vendor standard to do all the designing, standing up the system, as you would say. So hopefully, within the next four to six weeks, we'll have it completed. We're working with U.D. Society to address our need for animal care, moving from a leash who's not allowing anymore to take the, and they've been just really kind to work with and really open arms. So I think we have, I think we have a decent agreement in place, and we're just waiting for a final approval from the NARD to obviously get that done. But we have an informal agreement right now to take care of that on the same conditions. So when we all, all parties sign on the dotted line, it'll be a final deal. We intend to probably stay at this course. And one, I like the positive, we keep it in White Dot County, and they're using some of the same, they know some of the same people we know, so I got them. So I think it's good.
Chief Winham? C.
The only thing is, we have started some trash pickup. Grabbed along 98th Street last week. Going to try and schedule a few hours every week to go out and hit some places and start trying to clean up. This should see some difference out there. I'll be giving them throw it back out.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start council and mayor comments here. I wanted to, I guess, address something with the council real quick because I think we had some concerns maybe regarding item number four that was removed, and wanted to give an update on that. Over the last couple of days, actually, since the draft agenda was sent out, some things came up that revealed some concerns potentially with just the verbiage that we had. I gave everybody on council the, a couple of tweaks that I had requested, and one of those was, in fact, even the presentation from our chief, Chief Mathies tonight on our law enforcement, 2020, that was sent out to me, or well, all of us with our agenda. And it said, hey, this is going to be attached. A council person emailed and said, hey, we'd really like this as part of the agenda. And so how it was worded previously in Section 1E, F, and G would not have allowed us to make that adjustment as it said finalized. And so previously to my term as mayor, the council, and a lot of you guys will remember, on a regular basis, we would get our agenda Friday afternoon as it was published to the public. When I started my term, I asked that the council get the agendas on Thursday so that they would have some time to communicate. I wanted to hear from council and give them the opportunity to communicate with me and let me know if they had concerns, questions about the agenda that they were receiving. And so if we're sending the council the agenda Thursday and saying it's final, no, no adjustments can be made, that really didn't stay with the intent of the, at least of how I had set that up. I wanted that to be more of an open communication so council could bring me any concerns and we could have at least a discussion on that. I felt like that gave professional courtesy to our council, respected them as council members as well, and not sending a set in stone finalized, it doesn't matter what you say, version. I really wanted to open that communication and give that professional courtesy to our council. The other, so, and that was an example where that came up even in the last couple of days. So I felt like that was needed. A Section 3A, it was the other part of that, and we had an example of this even this evening with EverGee, where if someone is wanting to make an adjustment to the, I'm sorry, not an adjustment, but this would be forcing something onto, onto an agenda. And I believe that the council's original intent was not to say, oh, we're just going to cut the mayor out of this process, where right now, if you'll remember, we have a checks and balances system where the mayor basically doesn't vote on anything on the agenda, but sets the agenda, and then the council gets to vote on the agenda. And so where this section started, where it originated, was at our, one of our first discussions, actually, in saying, okay, we're not going to add something to, we would prefer not to add something to an agenda the night of the meeting. And the council member said, okay, well, what happens then if the mayor will block it from the agenda? How could a council person then put something on the agenda if the mayor's saying, no, you can't add it? And so that's where this section came up, was, okay, well, if the mayor blocks it, this gave a mechanism for the council to have a voice and say, okay, if I ask city manager, hey, Mike, will you put this on the agenda? And the mayor says, no, we're not going to hear that. This gives the council a mechanism to override the mayor and put something on the following agenda. I did not believe it was the intent or the will of governing body to, again, strip that agenda setting from the mayor and completely cut that out in its entirety. Again, just as a professional courtesy, as well as respecting that balance of power, professional courtesy, and saying, this is how we set our agenda. We bring it to the city manager. City manager might have some input, like he had tonight, and saying, hey, we're not ready for that with EverGee, and let's, let's hold off on that a little bit. Or, I mean, I've had things on agendas, hey, let's, let's talk about this, and Mike said, you know, now might not be the time for that. And so it's professional courtesy, not only to me, but also to our staff, to follow some sort of protocol and saying, okay, first, before we force it onto the agenda, override the mayor, we'll at least try to have that conversation. We'll have the professional courtesy of sending that email or at least having the phone call to try to initiate with that conversation with city staff or mayor. And then if, for some reason, me or future mayor's just saying, no, absolutely not, it's not going to go on the agenda, then it gives the council an override there, so it's not tying their hands for more than two weeks, really. And so if you'll see that Section 1E, I just took out the word finalized. Section F, I took out the word finalized. And then G, it just says upon distribution to the governing body, then approval by the mayor. How that read before was upon approval by the mayor, then distribution to the governing body. That's what was changed to allow that conversation so that if council wanted to communicate with me, they would, they would be welcome to do that. And so I could hear from you guys and potentially make adjustments like we did to this meeting. And when I had a council person say, hey, I really liked this on the agenda, it would give me the ability to be able to do that. And then Section 3, the only thing that was added, and you can see that on here, is a, if a member of the governing body previously requested an item to be added to the agenda that has been removed by mayor, everything else is exactly the same. And so all that's doing is asking for that, like in return of professional courtesy of saying, hey, we're going to talk to staff first, we're going to try to go about the normal process before we just jump right to trying to override the mayor and forcing something onto the agenda. One question that came up was, well, what if a community member asked for something to be added? Well, then I would, I would really recommend doing the normal process and bringing that to city staff and saying, hey, would you mind putting this on the agenda if it's not an emergency? Just, you know, following those normal protocols. But I think there was some concerning confusion, so I wanted to take time just to go over my thought process there and making sure that y'all understood, even with our conversations tonight about the budget, my goal is to hear from you and to have communication and I, how it was worded, cut that out. It cut out that ability for any changes to be made after Thursday or, or that original courtesy to be given to the Marion City staff to be prepared for meetings or to have that dialogue about what might come up on the agenda. So, anyway, just wanted to go over those with you. If you, if you have questions or concerns, give me a call. Yeah, y'all have my number. If you don't, let me know. I believe you do. I return phone calls, answer the phone, and I'd be happy to have that conversation. So we're going to move on to council comments. Councilman Malak, do you have anything for us tonight? It's not midnight yet.
Yes, I do. I think on your agenda, you know, I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate the efforts you're putting in it, but asking us to approve this agenda before this process was ever approved didn't seem right to me. You know, you're asking for an approval of the agenda. We've never have gone to that proposal yet. We never have acted on that, and that's the reason for my no vote on it. I do appreciate your efforts on the transparency part, and that's cool. That's all I'm going to say about that, because somebody else probably has something. What is the, where are we standing on replacing city manager? And what are we thinking about on interim city manager and so forth? I think that's going to be a pretty important thing. It's going to be right in the middle of the budget process, and there's a lot of things going on money-wise that we're going to have to have some pretty serious stability there to take care, to be able to transfer that over. And I think that we need to really seriously think about a finance director so we can take a couple of hats off of Zach's desk back there and let him get to be more of the city clerk, assistant city manager than the financial person for the city. I think that's something that's really going to have to be considered. I think we are in, we need an EMT director, and there's issues that need to be discussed in that process because we've got a couple of extra hats going on over there, too. So that's just some things that I'm bringing out. The, I'm not going to say this, but we also need to start really concentrating on the sales tax, renewal of the sales tax with the projects that we're talking about right now with the parts and all of that. That's going to be a very necessary thing for us to have. So we're really going to have to consider that. So the things that I'm mentioning here, I think are really priority items that need to be taken care of ASAP.
I can speak to the financial position. We are in a process process on that right now. We're using uh some support to help us recruit people outside of the traditional methods. Um and I'm, you know, hoping that we can have that wrapped up within sixty days, actually. So I, I think a part of it was, was, there's a little restructuring the job description there. Part of it is quite honestly uh what the fi, what the cost of those positions are. I think we, we had to readjust some of that. But I, again, when we were in the budget, if you remember, we talked about, hey, we're kinda putting this much money in there and we may have to move one up or one over or do that. And so we're still in the, the broader budget area there, but uh I think that that piece will be resolved pretty soon. I, I, I know Chief Widdam is certainly uh getting prepared on uh, you know, permanent filling of the deputy chief, which is the EMS person. We have an acting uh EMS person within the fire department. That's, that's one of the paramedics that stepped up and is working on.
Well, my point is, I think we've got, we've got staff that are wearing too many hats.
Yeah, I, I will not disagree with you at all on that.
There's some positions that need to be lightened up on, you know, make, make some higher.
Yeah.
I think that's critical.
It is.
Especially with budget presentation coming up, tax increases and all that. And we gotta get on top of this. We're actually late doing that.
I just wanted to let you know where we're at on those, Jack. And some of the others I can't certainly speak to at this point, but.
That's uh all for me, pretty much. Thank you.
Councilman Bishop?
Yeah, I have a few things here. Um if anybody sees a yellow go-kart out running around, it's mine.
Oh.
It was stolen, yes. Uh I have another thing, talking about this policy transparency thing. Um when you changed, when we had a consensus on the council for the policy that was in place at the last meeting, and then you go back and change it. Because in A, if you read that and then you read below, if somebody can get something put on the agenda, that night you can yank it off. And this could go on forever. So you got, you're having somebody that you don't, you have a disagreement with, and they want something on the agenda and you're not cool with it, you could take it off. Even if the council votes to put it back on, you can remove it again, according to this, what this says to me. Counsel, am I correct?
Where?
E, A. Section three.
Okay.
Three A.
Three A.
So my understanding was that.
I'm gonna wait for the council to, to respond, please.
So um we're talking about the effect of the modification of the blue language. Which, on three.
A.
Um D is what forces it on to an agenda. Any addition of an agenda item to a subsequent meeting agenda approved by the city council as provided in the section shall be added by the mayor to the finalized proposed agenda for a specified subsequent regular meeting in the manner stated in the approved motion. So it's, it's prescribed, prescribing.
Okay.
Forcing it through shall.
Okay.
I think that my understanding of what uh mayor's suggested edit was that, that the expectation would be that it wouldn't be a brand new item at the end of the meeting that would be being forced on to the next one. Which again is, you know, if you're going to do any policy, that's completely up to you, how you want to set expectations of one another. If, if you wanna have a brand new item, you can't have that. If you would like to follow the procedure that the mayor is proposing, which is the, the ordinary practice would be to suggest it to the city manager. It's included in the preliminary agenda that's sent to the mayor and to the council. Everybody sees what the city manager has in his mind. And then the mayor makes uh her changes, but then sent out to the council again on Thursday. And I think the mayor's proposal tonight is that that even then would not be finalized because she would want feedback from council saying, hey, why'd you take this off? I really think it's important, or why'd you add this? Um and so once, her proposal was once, there's been that twenty-four hours or eighteen hours or whatever it is, it only becomes finalized as proposed agenda in, at the time that it's published to the public. But um that ordinary course of how things are, are added to the developing agenda, the preliminary agenda, would be the expectation that anyone would need to go through that ordinary course first. Because you can als, always, under section two, you can always force it onto an agenda, even if it's brand new. Through a, a vote, right now, a vote of just, like you did tonight, just adopt an agenda, three, three votes. Right now, it gets your agenda. Um but under this, it would be four votes.
My biggest problem with it is, is that as a consensus of the council, we agreed to a document and you went back and changed it. And I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's the mayor's duties. Because when the five of us, I know all of us said, you good with this? You good with this? Yes. And then we thought we'd send it to council, have it cleaned up, come back tonight and vote for it. Well, now we're going another two weeks on another vote for this.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
I mean, you.
Yes.
So, a, as I explained, was just, if, if we left it how it was, then when council, when a council person emailed me back on Thursday and said, hey, I'd really like this added to the agenda. Sorry, too bad. It's final. And I didn't vote for that. I wanted the ability, because it's, it's a process that we're trying to figure out. Um and how he explained is, this is a policy that we're trying to figure out, how, what are our expectations of each other? How are, how are we treating each other in a professional manner and, and giving, trying to give as much respect to each other as possible? And so to me, I didn't feel like, when I send it out to council on Thursday, for example, it's saying, hey, this is set in stone. It doesn't matter what you, what you, what your questions or concerns are. Uh that would have, that would have said, well, that's too bad. And I didn't, I felt like that wasn't the council's intent. 'Cause when I read it, that certainly wasn't how, how, what I thought we were walking away with. Um at the last meeting, we had several, we didn't have a finalized document. We had a document with a bunch of changes to it. And so tonight was the discussion to finalize it. It wasn't finalized last time. Um and so that's why when I, when we're trying to work it in progress and, and we're sending it out like we did this time and everybody got the whole agenda, and then we're kind of saying, okay, let's try this out and see how it goes. That's when we found, okay, there are a couple of concerns here. Um and that being one, and then the other one being that, um then it cuts out that professional courtesy of mayor or staff and letting us know just ahead of time, hey, um can we, can, you know, we put this on the agenda instead of just forcing the override of the mayor on that night. And so um, like I, I, like I said, I, I didn't feel like the last one, the last meeting, we didn't have a finalized draft. It was a, a working document that we tried to put into practice this week and we found some issues that I thought the council would have concerns with and I had concerns with. And that's why um it obviously wasn't on the consent agenda. It was there for discussion.
But I believe, though, in this case, because of the, the Como laws, we, the five of us, can't talk to each other. We can only talk to one. I was not informed of this change on three A. No email, no nothing. And I just believe that this gives you the power to, even if it's, even if D is considered, you know, is D, yeah, D. I just believe that you're wanting transparency. Bringing this to us tonight is not transparency. We have not read this and you brought it up here, and this is not the first time this has happened. I just, I don't, I don't like it. In fact, I believe we could have this entire thing broke down into one chapter. You can't bring anything to the meeting and put it on the agenda the night of the meeting. Correct? Am I close?
And that's how it started, and I'd be fine with, with just leaving it at that.
I just think we're.
I, I mean, I would be fine.
Into the weeds with this, you know, and it's not. I'd have been, it'd have been nice if I, somebody, if I got an email saying, hey, look at section A. What do you think? You know, and then we could go from there. But this was not brought for me. And I don't know, anybody else get it?
No.
No. All right.
It was brought for discussion, though. I mean, that, that's how I take it. It was brought for discussion.
How I, how, I received instruction that night based on what I thought the consensus was. I drafted an ordinance, updated ordinance, and I think right at the end, we were gonna convert that into a resolution and a clause. So I sent that to staff. Staff had a few changes, strike, strike throughs, I think, in A to B, or something in there. And I didn't see that that made a material change to it. It's not being discussed right now. I was fine with it. And so um I prepared the, the document and then I think when we shared it with the mayor as part of the, the preliminary agenda stuff, that's when the clarification of whether, what, what the count, will of the council was, it came, came up. And so I highlighted areas in what was distributed to the council of questions staff had because there was even decree, disagreement as far as among staff of what we heard, what was on, on, I think you went back and listened to the audio. And so the, that was the approach that at least the three of us had is, this is the place to do it. This is the place that we can legally talk to all of you and get clarification. If there's a, a better way in the future for us to prepare documents, I mean, I'm happy to prepare documents at the request of any council member in terms of proposed language, proposed policies, et cetera. And each of you may have a different style. You wanna write your own, not use staff, that's, that's fine. So um that's how, that's how it happened. But in terms of the clarification, I just need, we, we all need marching orders on how we can best assist you all in terms of considering proposed documents.
I think on, it, it really, I, I think the biggest issue, I say issue, the, the one where there was maybe some, some differing opinion or view was, was really three A. And it really comes down to this is uh can an item, so at the end of the meeting, meeting like this, right? And again, I think that's the example I used. So if somebody was here during public comment, made some comment, they'd like to see us do, I, I used the fireworks ordinance, I think, right, and said, we really like it. And the council kind of collectively says, hey, yeah, put that on the next agenda. I think at least what the discussions were at the last meeting, this has been discussed as well, was, okay, does this mean that at the end of a meeting, if there's, somebody says, hey, can we make sure to put on the next meeting agenda A, B, C? And it's generally consensus, I mean, I mean, historically, it's been, yeah, yeah, let's do that. It hasn't really been, well, three think yes and two think no. I mean, it's just, a public member's come up. And I think from the, the mayor's, and I, I'm not trying to pull words on anybody, in those discussions, it was, well, don't we have that as part of the regular agenda process? I thought the concern was that there are, there may be something that got pulled from an agenda and I wanna make sure it gets on a future agenda and that that's where this should be at. So that's been the discussion anyways. I think I've summarized that well, is can an item be put on an agenda at, during the council, during your comment sections? If something's come up and you wanna see that on a future agenda, that was the discussion at the last meeting. And it was, it could be as long as three people said yes.
Well, and that.
And, and then this is also odd. If it's an item, if it's an item that wasn't put on, you know, was on an agenda, taken off an agenda, how do those items get placed on the agenda? And that's kind of what this language, I think.
And I think that's where the, the misunderstanding lie, would lie. Because in that situation, then council's setting the agenda and the mayor's role is what? I really, I mean, the mayor's role is what? Because I'm not voting on anything. I'm not then setting the agenda, right? And so I would ask, again, the professional courtesy, or if the fireworks person came up and council says, hey, we wanna um force that onto the next agenda, well, staff might have said, now's not the right time for whatever reason. Uh we need to do some homework for, you know, and so that's why I think it would be best in keeping and, and respectful of not taking that from either myself or future mayors in that agenda role, being that I can't even vote on anything. Um but just having the professional courtesy in this procedure and policy and saying, you know what? Um we're gonna do nor, if it's not urgent, which that wouldn't have been, um follow normal protocol. And instead of forcing it, overriding the mayor, forcing it onto an agenda, follow standard procedure that we're already doing and say, hey, city manager, we put that on there. Instead of taking that overriding vote, that overriding vote, the intention from the very beginning was really if the mayor's blocking it from an agenda. That, that's, that was from, from the first conversation. It was if the mayor says, nope, we're not putting this on the agenda, how do we override the mayor? And so there's no, there's no even mayor role in that in saying, hey, we're just gonna set the agenda as the council meeting before, then, I mean, at, at what point is the mayor even, like, what am I doing here? Councilman Bishop, did you have any other comments? I think that was right in the middle of yours.
No, that's um, I'm just not very happy with how this went down.
It would be helpful, uh I think, I don't want to speak for you, Mike, but it'd be helpful to me to know what the expectations of the council and the mayor are when it comes to how to provide drafts to the council. Because if each of you tell me, you know, I, I'm happy to share a draft and then if, if I get emails that say, I think it, I think this is what we decided, I think this is what we decided, I think this is what we decided, then I can prepare six drafts for you all to have something to discuss. I think I concluded that the, the most efficient way to do it is just to pre, prepare a draft and then to, to highlight the areas where I'm still confused as the scrivener, trying to actually reduce the consensus to actual language. And so in the future, I, I want to be responsive to the, the concerns as far as how, how do you wanna consider draft contracts, draft ordinances, draft resolutions, draft policies? And then have the ability to at least utilize staff to um to help you in, as individual members govern.
I would just add, so I would say this, we have always taken the position, and I think it's the right one. So if, if we get requests from a staff, I, I've always felt that our role is, we should respond to the, to the council's all right. So from a staff standpoint, we work for the governing body. We don't work for an individual. So if they're, during these draft processes, I mean, if, if it's, hey, we need to have drafts, we have input, that's, that's fine. But we should be distributing it to the body as a whole so that everybody's on the same page all the time versus trying to put the city attorney or anybody else on, will you go do this for me? And because that becomes very difficult for all of us, that, that, the city attorney or the city manager or anybody else is trying to respond one-off all the time. It's, it's, it's just not really good governance, in my opinion. So, I mean, more times than not, quite honestly, almost all of the discussions around contracts and stuff, this is kind of a rarity. Generally happens right eager, right? I mean, but as far as going back and forth. Generally happens right eager, right? I mean, but as far as going back and forth and things, and it may come to the council then, and then there may be questions that get, that have to be responded or pushed to another meeting. But we don't, we have not generally had six different versions of things going in and out. We've used, you know, the city manager, the city manager office to be that distribution point. It also helps around, as we've talked about, comma and court, right? That we're, that, that, I mean, I can communicate with all of y'all, right? I can do that. I can do that as a group. I can do this one-on-one. What you can't do is that communication's back. It's all, that's where it gets in. And you know, I put that out there every time, please do not respond to all, because that's where you get into trouble. But, you know, when we send agendas out and all that, we, we want the city attorney engaged in that, too. That's why he's on that distribution as well. Right? So that all of us are on that same page at the same time, seeing the same thing. That's really where I think the goal should be as we distribute items. This is a policy. This is, you know, a, a unique scenario. I mean, fundamentally, I will tell you, I, we've been doing it the same way a long time, and that's never a good, I think it's good to have a policy so that we're all on the same page. Again, I, I get back, that's good governance, right? We all need to know what the roles are of each other and what the expectations are, and I think from that standpoint, this was really good policy documents to have, the same as an employee manual, or same as whatever number of policies, financial policy. This makes sure we're all on the same page. From staff, though, and that's a little bit what happened Thursday, I mean, we're looking at it going, okay, well, wait a second. If our policy is, it's been sent out to the council and it's approved, then should we be making amendments? And it just put us in a, how do we, how do we make sure we're responding to the body as a whole? That's what we want to do. And, you know, I, I don't think a policy's a bad item here. I think it's a good thing to have. Written makes it easier, uh, and I mean, quite honestly, then, you know, if one of y'all, any one of y'all says, hey, Mike, I don't care what the policy says, I want you to do this, you can expect my answer will be no. Right? And I will say, I can't do that because our policy is this, but if you want to amend the policy, you want to amend the code of ordinance, you want, we have a body here. That's, that's, that's the goal of this group, so. Long and short, I think the more we can keep it relative to communications, that when we have these things, it should, certainly anybody can say, I've got a comment, I'd like to incorporate this, I'd like to see it, but we need to make sure that's going back out to the whole body, that the whole body knows what that is, and I, maybe that's, I think, a little bit of mis, frustrations, I'm sensing, you know, from there. Again, I think on this, the, the changes, I would just say the changes in paragraph one, I, I, I mean, you're just basically taking, I get it, try, it opens it up. I don't know if the word should be then approved by the mayor or and approved by the mayor, but I get it, right? Once, once it's all in and collected, we want to send it out. And we want to get it, I mean, right, we want to get it to you. I mean, I think it's been great that, that the goal has been get this to you Thursday. And again, part of that goal was to get it to you, and the comment was, well, if we get it at the same time the public is, all of a sudden our phones ring, and we just haven't had any time. We don't even know it's there yet, so it gives us a heads up. So at least we have some amount of time, 24 hours, to have that packet, you know? If you choose not to read it until Monday, well, that's, that's your, that's your, but at least you can't, you know, I mean, at least you have an opportunity, or somebody calls and says, what is this on the packet? You say, wait a second, let me go get my packet, and you've got what's there. So I, I think all that's good. It's really this, I, I don't really have a hard front against that. I think both of those discussions happened, right? One was, what happens if the mayor takes something off an agenda, but the council wants it put back on? What is that process? And the other discussion we had was, well, what if it's something that came from, came up during the meeting, and we want to put it on some future agenda? It might not even be the next agenda. It could be two or three down the road. That's really the two pieces, and I, I, I can, I think we can work with either, whatever that is, I just, having some decision is really, we, we've been working at this, I know, for a number of weeks, and I'm sure everybody is ready to get some solution to this. All in with that.
Councilman Adams?
I'd like to see a one sen, one sentence resolution. It's, this is just completely ridiculous, because if we want to get down into the weeds, this is what happens to legislation. Is you start writing something, and you got to define it, and you got to define the, the fit, the, the definition, and it, and it just goes on and on. For instance, on 1D, if a mayor pulls something off of the agenda, they should be required to call that person and explain it, why they took it off of the agenda, whether it's the mayor or the staff member, why it was taken off. And so that being one, under 1C, the example of city manager, it needs to be changed to staff, because we would have been in violation of that this week, since Mike was out of the office. Okay, uh, 2D. So in order for I, I had something to be added, the entire body has to be present and four, four out of the five votes. Is that the way it reads?
2D.
2D.
Yeah, it's not a simple, thanks total number of members present.
Yeah, that's not what it says. 2C. Second line, may move to amend or withdraw with explanation, which we did tonight. We withdrew an item from the agenda. And this only, this only addresses adding to?
Well, I mean, respectfully, I think the word amend would include withdraw. You can add or take away. I, I can add, withdraw if you like.
I think it needs to be clearer than amend. Amend is an add. Alter would be a plus or minus, in my mind, but amend is a, is a subtract, is only addition.
That's a change. Amend is a change.
I want clarification, so that it's not debated in the future.
Amend or withdraw, or add or...
Or add or withdraw.
Add or delete, whatever.
Well, and before we move on on that, so would you be comfortable with amend, add, or withdraw? The idea of amending an item, wouldn't be adding it or withdrawing it, but changing it, too?
Yeah, but you put in brackets or whatever after amend. I just think a definition of amend within the document would be appropriate. 3D. In addition of an agenda item to a subsequent meeting agenda approved by the city council, as provided in this section, shall be added by the mayor to the preliminary and finalized proposed agenda.
Got it. I just would stop for that. So did we have final? I, I just asked this. We do. Nevermind. Thank you. I'm sure I need to work finalized, but it's fine.
And then 3C. So basically, if, if somebody's out for weeks sick or on vacation or something, we basically have limited it to a four fifths again, I guess, is what it amounts to.
I think the verbiage might have been three affirmative.
Right, and that's what it says. Shall pass by three members. So it, it, previously, when we had that discussion, it was three, whether there's, so it takes three for a quorum. So you could have three members present, four members present, or five members present, regardless of the number of present. In that case, at least the last discussion, it took three.
Assuming everybody's here.
If there's, if four of the council members here, it still takes three. If there's three of the council members here, it takes three. It was three, just that number. That, that's what we discussed last time.
Okay. And maybe, maybe it's, but make it, it didn't say members of city council present.
Yeah, and it, the way I think we ended up was, I was saying that if it's, everyone's here, it's just a simple majority, but though, I think there was at least one comment that if there are people missing, and people, and, and that the body is conducting a lot of business, that that would be something to avoid. And so by, by actually legislating the number of votes, it requires, if there's one person missing, it'd be a three-fourths vote. If there's two people missing, it'd be unanimous. So it'd be kind of a sliding scale threshold, but I can, if the, the consensus is to change that to present, I can certainly do that.
I, I understand what you're talking about. I, I just, if we're going to write a document, it needs to be as precise as possible. And, uh, under the title of it, City Council Agenda Packet Policy and Guideline, because we were given an agenda without a packet this time, and that's part of the irritation of getting documents later than the deadline.
Can you clarify that? I mean, I, I'm going to go back. I mean, so again, we don't send the, we traditionally don't send the packet with all attachments until it's complete. I, I, I mean, but, but, I mean, that's, if, if we're sending out the, with, the initial one will not have a, agenda items attached. I mean, it'd just be a listing of the, basically a draft of the agenda with the items listed. We then typically, uh, through discussion, uh...
That's the Thursday one, right?
Well, Wednesday is the one we send out to everybody now, or that's the plan, where it just, it's just the agenda. It just, it's the one page, right? It has all the items on there. And then typically, we send out the next one, traditionally, we've sent out, has been kind of a final packet with the agenda items in there. So if the request is, and, and that's what we somewhat did this time. I think the question is, so once we sent, so we send out a packet, and it's got all the agenda items with it, but one of those agenda items is amended or adjusted or modified, whether it's because staff found typos in it, or a number wrong, or whatever, or the mayor, or a member of the council found an error, and once it changed, at some point, we have to send a final packet out, and, and it just is what it is, and, and I'm, I'm getting a little worried. Now I'm going to have to start doing this on Mondays, and, and...
And that's, I guess that's kind of the point of the whole thing, is, is we're getting silly ridiculous, and, but it's, but what I'm proposing is to avoid these last-minute documents coming in, and, and, and we don't have time to read them, and it's not sent to everyone. It's sent to specific people, and so, um, it, I am so frustrated, and I, I don't, we haven't spent this much time on a building project.
That's true.
I mean, we're happy to send, I mean, that packet out, and then if there's adjustments to the packet, generally, it's been our, it's been staff's position is, if, if there's an, say it's an ordinance, and that ordinance had to been modified, you know, additional length, we then send that out kind of as an addendum to the entire council. That's what we've done, and that's what we continue to do.
And that's, I guess, that, that's fine, as long as everybody gets it.
Send the whole packet back out.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's, it's... Switching gears a little bit, um, would it be possible to list on the minutes, the number of people that are online listening? I'm going to need to give any names or anything, but just the number of people that are listening online. It'd be interesting, interested to know, in trends and so forth. And cemetery's been surveyed?
Yes, I think so. You're talking about the, the historic cemetery?
Yes.
The surveying work is actually, it's, it's, I'm not exactly sure where in the process is that. We'll probably move in that item to the, uh, May Planning Commission Agenda for the, the replat of that area. The, um, appraisal work has been, the preliminary kind of appraisal work on the area of land that would be, that the city's interested in transitioning over to our ownership, that's been complete. So those two things are kind of moving at the same, in same direction, two different paths, but the, I don't believe that the, the replat's not been, no application's been made on the replat. Surveying work is going on. You'll see stakes out there.
I saw some stakes out there.
Yeah, they're, they're, it's ongoing right now. I couldn't say exactly how close they are being done, but shouldn't be too much longer.
Okay. And I don't know how you pronounce it, but the S.A.I.A. Freight Company?
SIAA.
SIAA.
Yeah, that's taken over the Old Dominion location. That is awesome. You, you said it wouldn't be empty very long, and you were right. It filled really quickly, and that's really a great thing for our city. And so the other thing, I was at, at TTPC last meeting, and, and, uh, the guy, the staff member that, that kind of heads things up, came up to me and said, I hear your city manager is retiring, and I said, yeah. He said, well, he's going to be extremely missed, and, and I mentioned that he was really good at doing project present, uh, uh, project presentations and submissions, and has been very successful at meeting, getting high scores and, and, and doing well with it, and, and he kind of rolled his eyes. He said, yes, he's very good at it. And so our city manager is recognized broadly as, as an expert in what he does, and very successful. And he has, he has been very successful at giving us projects like 98th Street that we can move forward with, and Kansas, and 110th Street, and, and there's just a lot of them. Gosh, we go back clear even to the, to over by the 435 and the, the Shell Station, or the station over there, the,
Yeah.
the road through there, so, um, just, I, I really appreciate your reputation, and when we, when I go somewhere, and, and who's your city manager, I mention your name. It's always a positive thing, so thank you for your professionalism.
If I'm, I'm going to, if I may interject something here, as a suggestion, relative to this policy, if, I would suggest that we take this version you have tonight, if, if I can get a word version from the mayor, and the city attorney and I are going to wordsmith this thing out based on the rest of the input tonight, if that's okay. We will collectively send it to the entire council. If you have specific amendments, you would send those back to me. We will incorporate those onto the documents. We send it back out to the council, and hopefully, we can get, if, if you want to move this forward, and then by the next meeting, and then you will have a final version that at least everybody has seen. Well, if that's acceptable, I assume it's acceptable to the city attorney. I think that will, will move this ball forward. If there's some, I mean, I, we, we've kind of moved on, but it seems like this is the document we're now moving, working from, so if we could start with this and send it out.
Are we talking about the blue-lined version that was given tonight?
We have tonight, yes.
The one with, there, there's like three sections that have been blue-lined.
Correct, and then that way incorporate the changes, I believe that Councilman Adams brought up as well.
Well, he's brought, yeah, we're going to incorporate the comments that, that, I'm just saying, we will put those in a, we'll use a strike-through version, so you can see it in a different color, and, and until we get this thing to a final document. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to come to some conclusions.
I, I don't agree with us communicating directly with Mr. No, Mr. Nae. I think, I think it's, that's a disaster waiting to happen. I think in the last 16 years, I've called our attorney one time. And so, um, well, I called her twice, because the second time I was asking for a referral for a friend of mine. So, um, I, I think that's just a recipe for disaster. I think things should run through the city manager and not create a problem between them of communicating with him and him not knowing, and, and vice versa. I, I just...
Well, we'll be all in that. I, 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 I was saying, the city attorney and I can sit down, and we can butt the heads and do whatever we need to, get this and do a document. We can distribute that document to the council, be, will be included in that. If there's comments, changes, adjustments, you can communicate back to me, so we don't get into any coma thing. We will then get back together. We'll incorporate whatever those changes, send it back out. You can see what those changes are. You can note even who made those, or recommend... You can see what those changes are, you can note even who made those, or recommended those changes, so I'm just, I'm just trying to find a path.
The only thing I would mention is that, if you communicate with the city manager, which you're welcome to do, it potentially is an open record. And if you communicate with me, it's potentially protected by a attorney client, so I wouldn't cut off that in important situations. I'm not asking you to call me, but at the same time, we were, have been working hand in glove on just hacking out whatever we need to hack out, contracts and this. And so, the big question is, how do you want staff as a whole to present you with the options? And so, one way to do that is in Adobe comments, or track changes comments, where I can just say, you know, "One person had this suggestion, the next person had this suggestion, here are the options, you got to decide." Some of these things that have been talked about tonight are mutually exclusive, and we can't do both. So, I have to get direction. We somehow have to get direction from our client, which is the government body. And if we're getting, if, yeah, some of us are communicating with one and the other, we just collapse that into one email chain. Yeah, that's all we're trying to do.
And I, and I would, I would totally agree. There are times, and as you know, when we have communications, that we, we always have the city attorney communicate directly with the council, because it's privileged information. We had that. So I, I was just suggesting on this particular item, so I don't think there's anything...
The worst-case scenario is that any, is that I be perceived as working for any one elect, and, or for the city manager. We all work for the corporate entity that the government body is, and I need to know how to do it. We need to know how to do our job.
So are you guys fine with Mike's suggestion of getting that? And then if you have concerns, email Mike, and then they can be working on a document to finalize at an upcoming, I don't know how many back and forths, that might be none, and we might have worked it all out tonight, but, you know, in the near future, is everybody comfortable with that?
I think at this point, that's about our only choice.
We could sit here and split hairs all night.
Yeah, I just, I just try to, it's just kind of a...
No, no. But at least everybody's got it and has to be that. Okay, Councilman Scott.
It brought to my attention that we have, potentially could have several people that are qualified and interested in our city manager position when Mr. Webb retires this summer. And thinking about that, with that, with him leaving in the middle of the summer, it's in the middle of the year, obviously. And so, if we have two or three people that are qualified and overqualified for the city manager position, I think that we need to look at those options as interim positions, and really, and look at that strategically and financially, and see if that's our best option for 2023. And at the end of the year, first of the year, if, if the interim position that we have is solid, and everybody's happy, and everything's well, then we can make it official then. And if not, then we have the option of looking for, you know, somebody else. But, Mike, you probably know, or somebody here may know, how expensive is it to, you know, do a broad search for, you know, a new, a new city manager position?
Well, I would, it's a little bit, I mean, I, just from, from experience, but you're probably looking for a, and I think I've, you know, for a professional search firm. So you go hire a firm similar to what some of us have seen, you know, you're probably in the $30,000 to $50,000 range.
Just for the search?
Yeah, and it kind of depends. I mean, some search firms is, okay, this is our fee, and then plus travel expenses, et cetera, and so forth. Others build it all into, to a single fee. You know, the league has a process as well, that's a little less expensive. I'm not sure that, I mean, I think at that point, if you're going to do that, then, then you probably the professional search firm. But you got to go through some process. How do you pick them, and who, you know? You know, and I think we can have some other discussions about process. I don't, it's, and I think I'd have to ask the city attorney, I mean, if this is an item that potentially, since it is a personnel matter, that you may wish to have discussions within the executive session process, and what can that cover? I'd have to defer all, but I think you're, I mean, I mean, I think we're kind of getting the start of that process. I was intending anyways to send some additional information through the mayor to just some of the basic information we already know, and, you know, I mean, you've got job description, but just what's our, you know, how's our pay scales, what have been the benefits, maybe some sample documents that come from other organizations that, you know, where I could send however I want to do it, but you probably, you probably need to have some discussions internally, probably in the executive session, I think.
Yeah, but no means I'm trying to push you out the door.
No, 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 I get it.
I just was, again, I, because I was, I heard that was expensive, you know, to do the nationwide search, went for sure what it was, and then after, you know, hearing that we may have two or three people that are interested, that are already, you know, city employees, or acquaintances of somebody, you know, we, I think it's, it could be in our best interest to, you know, to get, if that's the case, have that information brought to us, so we can think about it and discuss it, you know, in this kind of a forum. And on the, on the policy for the agenda, it's frustrating. I mean, I'm frustrated with the whole, with the whole procedure, beyond frustrated. And it's frustrating that we've been talking about it for two months, we've got countless hours in it, here we are, you know, 9:35, and we're, and we're still kind of talking about it. And, you know, the way I look at it, you know, what we had in place before wasn't broke. I mean, it's been in place for 100 years. The, you know, they wrote that, how they make the agenda, the policies and procedures on how to create the agenda, that's been in place for 100 years. And what we had before, I don't think it was broken. We all have the same agreements up here about being fully transparent. I think there might be a better understanding for us if there's a policy wrote for, for us, and for this, for the citizens to understand when an executive session needs to be called, or even a, a meeting. And, you know, I think it's good for all of us to understand what those criteria is for executive session and a private meeting. Because I don't think anything like that's been discussed.
Writing a note, so...
Like I said, I, it's beyond frustrating that we're still hashing on this, because I think we all have better things to do. We want to really focus on, not that this isn't important, it is important, but I really want us to focus on, you know, the task at hand in front of us, and around the city, and making the best decisions for our citizens. That's all I got.
I'm not going to kick that dog around the corner.
Oh, come on.
But I do agree, I do agree. Hopefully, I think this, a lot of time has been sent on this, spent on this, and hopefully, we can come to a consensus. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you for the street maintenance presentation. I think that will make a lot of citizens happy, knowing the streets are on the radar to be worked on. Chief Mathies, thank you for your presentation. Eye-opening, to say the least, disturbing. But I will add a comment to you and your staff. Oh, two weeks ago, it was a Saturday night, my husband and I were watching TV, I was probably watching basketball, I don't know. And we were in our living room, and fell asleep, and about 3 o'clock, our doorbell rang. And it was a police officer.
Garage door.
Our garage door was open. Thank you. It was terrifying. What the hell? I know, I know. Anybody come on in, thank you. I don't know who it was, but I know our neighbors have done, a lot of people it happens to, but when it, you know, you laugh at them, but it was kind of scary, so thank you. They go above and beyond, so. And that's all I have.
Wanted to thank our public works crew for the litter pickup. I know that's been our request for quite some time, well, before CE was here, actually, but you guys got right on it, and that has been a consistent concern of our community. And so, I know that they really appreciate the work and the effort of y'all just taking care of and beautifying our city. So that's really important to us. We, as, well, actually, Councilman Adams was down there, they welcomed a new county administrator today, and so, he'll be, I think his first day was actually today, David Johnston. And speaking with him very briefly, he's excited to start working with and collaborating with Edwardsville and Bonner Springs. So it's nice to be moving in the direction of our county, realizing that we're more than Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County. So I'm hopeful for, for good things coming forward from that.
Would it be possible to invite him to a council meeting to introduce himself and meet the council?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I did reach out to him. I mean, I, some people I know in the city management called me up and said, "Hey, David's going there." I was like, "Okay." So, I don't know what his current, his city email or account, I can guess what it is, but we can, we'll see if we can arrange something.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he's got a heavy load right in the near future, but at least to get on the calendar would be, would be great. In fact, Mayor Garner has asked if he could get on the calendar sometime soon as well. As far as our, it's turned into an agenda setting ordinance, just, just to remind folks, it started out as a resolution, sorry, resolution, not ordinance. Started out as a transparency agenda that simply was not adding anything within 40 hours in the meeting. And then by council request, it is turned into a whole policy, which is important, but it's, if it's a policy that we're going to be trying to work within, then, then it takes some time to hash out, see what works and what doesn't. And I think it's worth the conversation to make sure that we are trying to, try to fill in anything we can. I, I felt like bringing something to a public meeting to discuss in public was pretty transparent, as, you know, just like Councilman Adams brought some suggestions, and I feel like that was appropriate, and finding to have that discussion, as the agenda item wasn't approval, but considering the resolution. And so, that's what we did, well, without it being on the agenda, we are having that discussion still, and trying to make sure that it works for everybody, and dealing with concerns that come forth. And so, hopefully, we can have that, just momentum moving forward as a council, and trying to work stuff together and on the same page. I think that is, gosh, I'm trying to remember. Oh, I'm sorry, you asked about the city manager update, and so, I wasn't sure if everyone, I only heard from a few people regarding the job description that we sent out, just to get feedback, but I know emails were a little funky over the last week or so. And so, if you didn't get those, let me know, and we'll, we'll send those back out. I'll be in touch with Mike this week, just to go over, okay, so we have the job description, you know, what are we hiring, but then what are we offering is the next part of that package. And so, Mike touched on that tonight. What's our current contract? What are contracts in the area, you know, with the LPM? I've got some information to pass around to council for that. And we'll get some other resources, just to make sure that we're moving forward in that process, and know what, what the offer's going to be. So before we're opening, you know, making a position open, we need to know first, what is it going to be, and what are we offering? And so, I look forward to that in your emails. Again, please let me know if you didn't get the original email from us with the job description information. Hopefully, I answered all questions. If not, feel free to give me a call.
Was there more than one job?
There were a couple of me, it's the same one email, but a couple attached on.
I didn't get any of it.
All right, so I'll get those to you. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.